The recording. Thank you.
Okay, we'll call it a order, the Minter and Town Council meeting, September 18th, 2024. We'd all do roll call first.
Gusty here.
Brian here.
Lynn here.
Eric here.
And Earl is here, and Kate and Tom are out of the country. They will be back next time. If you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to pull?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agendas presented.
I'll second that. Motion by Gusty, second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Next, the regular agenda. Do we have any amendments?
No, sir. Nope.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular agenda was presented.
I'll second that again.
Motion by Gusty, second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, does the board have any declaration of conflict of interest on any item on the agenda tonight?
No.
Okay. Next is public comment, and this section of our meeting is for anyone that wants to address the council on any issues about the town that are not on the agenda. So at this time, Larry, please state your name and address, please.
Larry Stone, 152 Main Street. I'm here to ask for a little bit of guidance. Jane and I purchased the Purple House, 156 Main Street. Next one is at 152 Main Street, prior to the changes to the current law that is requiring commercial beyond ground level. So I'm an entrepreneur. I've scratched my head. I run numbers on a lot of different options. I can't find an option that makes sense. I can't find anything that makes viability sense. And in the process of those two years, Jane and I have decided to sell our marital home. She's moving into Helen's house, where I currently live, at 152 Main Street. And I will be moving into the home at 156 Main Street. Now, that property is too big for me alone. It actually is broken up into three separate units. And so I have decisions to make on what I'm going to do. And I need to, you know, talk to you guys about what are the options. One of the transitions that is going to happen is the Agora will no longer be. And that's a sad thing for many of us in the community. But it is, Jane will have some creative ideas, and I'm sure she'll come up with something. But when I looked over the community plan, one of the things I know is that the town is looking for those open community gathering places. And the town is also looking for a corridor from Main Street to the river. I can provide both of those things on the property at 156 Main Street. I can easily move my wood fired oven over and have a, you know, a more communal type of operation. I don't think I would be operating a mobile business. What I would like to do is this. I would like to make the house look better because it looks like, you know, like it needs a lot of attention. I would like to bring in a very cool, modern mining type of architecture, something that you might see in Telluride. I would like to add accents based on the railroad and the things we have going on here. But ultimately, how it impacts me is that the way the ordinance reads, I will probably be crossing the threshold of upkeep, meaning the siding's got to go. I want new siding. The roof has got to go. I want a new roof. I want a deck on the second floor that's covered overlooking Main Street. And then downstairs, I want to make a covered portal because when anyone parks back there, whether it remains a long-term type of residential place or a short-term, everyone enters the property from Eagle Road, which is more ideal than having people park on Main Street anyway. So I would be adding about, I'm guessing, about 500 square feet to kind of fill in the gap of where the main entrance to that house is on the back to the river. Well, I'm going to exceed the threshold. So it would be against current ordinance to pursue that. So instead of me going through the processes, we've talked about this briefly once before, I've talked to town staff, and I'm going to end up back here again. So I'm just curious about the general consensus. Would the council prefer long-term rental and residential? Because it's already grandfathered in as residential. And what changes could I make? Or would you allow me to make in order to make the property more appealing? And does it sound appealing to the council to have a corridor? And I know that we have water issues, and I would like to tap into UNC and the Walking Mountains and come up with a zero scape type of plan that could be beneficial to community members that passage way through between Main Street and River. So I think I could create something really cool over there. But again, I've bumped up against an ordinance that says, no, you can't do this. So I'm looking for a little bit of consensus of what at least the five of you that are sitting here tonight might think.
So just for clarification, you are or are not going to do a business?
I am not.
Okay, so you're going to, you want to rent out part of it, or?
Yes. Now, I've run the numbers. If I put two more bedrooms in downstairs and made short-term rental and tapped into that sales tax, I could benefit the economy of the town by having short-term rental through the sales tax that it would be generating and also putting more beds and heads into our community, which we're really short in this town anyway, to help support the other businesses that are in town. So that is something that I would consider. I can handle that. But at my age, Earl, 59, I don't want to start a new business. And when I look at just making that space be open to hopefully someone coming in to open a business, I'm already looking at seven empty spaces in town. So why would they want to come and rent my space? You see what I mean? It's a dilemma. So I can keep it as long-term rental. It wouldn't bring any sales tax in. It's not going to help anything other than provide housing. Or I could do short-term rental, bring sales tax in, provide a corridor and open space or, you know, community space. But the way that the current ordinance reads, I can't do that.
If I might be able to respond, and I know we don't normally respond to public comment. However, in this particular case, the route that Mr. Stone is potentially looking to go would be an amendment to the ordinance to allow certain things to occur in the downtown 100 block that may facilitate additional lodging tax revenue, if I'm hearing you correctly. So what Larry could do is he can come, so staff facilitates the public coming to us and working together toward what he might want to see in an amendment to an ordinance that would then go through the proper channels. If it deals with Chapter 16, it goes to Plan and Commission first, and then to the council for potential consideration. So I would just say that there is an opportunity and a process to go through if these are things that you would like to see done, and staff can help facilitate you in that effort.
Thank you for that, Michelle. And I understand that. I would need to hire an architect to do the work, to design it out, to go through the process, to come into the town and say, this is what I want to do. I'm just wondering if the town is open to this idea or not. If they're not open to it, then it just stays a single-family home and...
I leave that to all of you.
Yeah, that would happen, Larry. You said you can sit down and go through the process. And that maybe, council needs to understand better with, you know, that kind of stuff. We're making some decisions tonight. But we're, you know, we've got a new design guidelines for the 100 block that was passed one year and a half ago.
Right, just after I purchased the property.
Yeah. Okay, and so that's any, we're open to reviewing our processes that are new because they are new. And we are wanting to, I'm wanting to be nimble as far as adjusting things like we did last time when we pulled down those pumpouts. You know, the reality of the situation, we're trying, I know where we want to, I think council knows where we want to go. But if the current guidelines aren't good enough to get us where we want to go, then we're willing to look at process suggestions and so forth, and then we can move in from there.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. This is just one thought, and maybe I'm wrong, but it seems to me that you're already talking about putting short-term rentals in there as something you want to do. So you put a couple of short-term rentals on the first floor and an office in front because that's your business, you're running short-term rentals. And it seems to me that you could cobble together a little business that wouldn't be, then maybe it's just selling souvenirs, you know, or, you know, it's amenities for your short-term rental people. And then it seems like it would be much easier for you to meet the guidelines.
Well, I am currently operating short-term rental in there, and I have the luxury of doing that even now. I've opted to keep the studio as a short-term rental that's around back. The front I'm keeping as long-term rental. And I have other long-term rental properties because, quite frankly, it takes care of local economy. I'm housing people who own business in town and work in businesses in town. So that works. If I go and put an office in there, all of a sudden I'm hit with a commercial property tax. It's about four or five times what residential property tax is. And I'm really not interested in doing that. I pay about $1,000 a month in commercial property tax for the scarum. And we all enjoy the limitations that our state constitution has on residential property taxes. So to facilitate an office is limiting. However, I would love to see Radio Free Mintern come back into Mintern. And if there was a way that I could facilitate in my properties, or Jane Longshire would feel the same way, to bring that organization back over here, that would be something that I feel would be in addition to the community. But just to have my property go commercial, because I put one office space in theirs, it doesn't add up financially. It's not viable. I'm better off leaving it as it is.
So we've got to stretch the public comment because we usually don't talk back and forth like this. So I suggest we, you know, you go through it with Michelle's suggestion and just work through, work with them. They can talk with us, and the staff can brief us and so forth, and get that done.
Okay, well, thank you for not providing me with the consensus, but thank you.
Okay, is there any other people that want to make public comments to this? Okay, Hawkeye, you know the rules, just not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Hawkeye Flary, 160 Main Street. I came up to address the water issue again. I've been thinking about it since I left. The gentleman that's designing it said it was going to be $11 to $14 million to build a water plant, and it wouldn't even make our water state compliant. He said that we had to redo the sand filters as a pre-filter. So I was thinking, how much is it going to cost to redo the sand filters as a pre-filter? And if they are rebuilt as a pre-filter, would they create water that's compatible to state standards? Or what's the difference in cost to make those sand filters compliant with state standards? If we could do that, I think that would help a lot of the budget concerns that you have. If we could get the sand filters up and operating as a primary filter and not build a $14 million water plant, which I believe no one can afford, it would give you time. Time would be on your side. You would get the money in from the developments that are hanging out there, like the railroad, the north, what is it?
Minter North.
Minter North and Beldon. And it would give you time for something to happen up at Malloy Park and possibly be able to sell the parcels you want to sell that you're considering would be a big profit to the town that could help pay for a future water plant. So is it feasible for us to buy some time by rebuilding a filter, which has to be rebuilt anyway, so that $14 million? What kind of plant is it? Help me out here.
Membrane.
Huh?
Membrane.
Membrane filter. Doesn't have to be built. We can put it off. And maybe if we could put it off 10 or 15 years, technology will advance to the point where you don't have to have the pre-filter. Anyway, this is something that I thought I'd bring up and run by you and see if it would be worth looking at what it would cost. The cost difference between rehabbing the sand filters to act as a pre-filter and rehabbing the filters to act as a primary water source for the town and give us some time to maybe get more residents and bring down the cost of that membrane filter. That was my one concern. The other concern I have is where are we at with the water tank at Medina's? The water tank in my mind, the reason we built that water tank is for fire protection. It's a primary source of fire protection for the town. And this day and age of the wildfires we have, I really believe that needs to be brought to the top of the list. If you stop and think about it, if we have a water break below the intersection of Malloy Park Road and the highway, the town is out of water. Earl knows, he was on council when we built that water plant. The reason we built that water plant where it's built is it would supply water to the town in case of an emergency or in case of a water break. There's a point where that tank won't push water far enough south to do any good. But if we have a water break, there's a point where part of the north end of town still has water, still has fire protection. So I think you really need to have your water engineer look at that and review what it's going to cost and bring that to the top of the priority list for infrastructure construction. Because without it, like I said, the chance of something happen and a fire breaking out at the same time, maybe they're minuscule. But if it does happen, there is no fire protection for the town of Minterne except for however many gallons they're carrying on the fire truck.
Hawkeye, I'm going to give you a quick answer on this one because it is a quick answer. We are rehabilitating that tank.
Okay.
Will be part of the system. As far as earlier concerns, that's a little bit more of a talk, and I'll be happy to sit down and have a cup of coffee with you sometime this week or whenever it's convenient for you. And I can kind of give you an update on where we're at with that. Because that's a long discussion.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Hawkeye.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to talk about anything, address council or anything that's not on the agenda?
Nobody in the audience.
Michael Gattino, 110 Taylor Street. Question. Hawkeye brought up some questions, whether I agree or not. There's some insight to why some of the decisions are being made. Is that information available to us? Like, we've done a plan that, you know, here's what the sand filter, da-da-da. And if so, and if it's on the website and all I got to do is click a link, and I've missed it, I apologize. But if you could direct me to that so I could be educated to some of the things he's bringing up that, anyway, so that I can get educated.
Yeah, it's mainly, we've been, it's been, we've discussed this in council for years, and we're now down to making the hard decisions we need to make. So sometime in the next few months, the decisions will be made, and we'll move forward. So before then, I guess, maybe we want to have a Minter Matters session.
I'm happy to answer the question.
And you, okay, go ahead.
So this last winter, we had a plan brought forward called the Minterm Water Treatment Plant Alternatives Analysis. And it looked at all the potential options for serving water for the town of Mintern, including a package plant, a membrane filtration plant, a well field, and rehabilitation of the slow sand filters. And it examined the costs for each of those and the time for implementation and the ability to maintain and upkeep with continuing CBPE regulations. And I can share that plan with you.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you so much for the comments. Next is the council comments and committee reports. Anybody here, everything?
Attended a Minterm Fitness Center committee meeting, and membership is up, attendance is up, and exciting news, there's professional hockey players using it now. So that's great news. Yeah.
Brian?
Wanted to thank the DDMTA trail crew. They last week removed over a ton of barbed wire from Hay Meadow, Mountain in the Fields and everything up there. Super cool, there's a lot of Minterm residents like to walk their dogs and have them run around the fields up there and ski there in the winter. So scary to think we were on top of all that barbed wire the last few years, or few years, 50 years probably. And then thank you to everybody who added map points to that CDOT map tool that Michelle sent out this week and was passed around to the community a lot. There was a lot of discussion about Highway 24 last week, and we talked a lot about how we are undergoing a process with CDOT to really try to get them to make some changes. And it was really awesome to see, when you look at the mapping tool that they sent out and you kind of zoom across the state, how many dots were in Mintern. And then, you know, we're kind of putting the rest of the state to shame. So maybe proud of the Mintern community for kind of stepping up and responding. So thank you to everybody who did that. And whoever didn't, look for that email and go back and click and add some points, it's not too late.
I don't have anything.
Yeah, I don't either, so let's get down to business. Managers report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have a few items to bring up to the council which are not currently in my manager's report in the council packet? If anyone has questions about anything in the manager's report itself, I'm happy to respond and comment. A few items, Minterm Matters. We haven't been scheduling that lately, and I wanted to see if the council is still interested in moving forward with that effort, or if you are looking to drop the Minterm Matters program.
I would like to get back on track with that. And we just need to make sure we get the word out. Just while we have a crowd here, Minterm Matters is a, was a monthly meeting that mayor or council members would sit down at one of the restaurants or whatever public place makes sense for people and discuss the issues that we're going through. And it was a once-a-month session. And got to be, after a while, no one was showing up except people that wanted to ask council if they can do this or do that, or, you know, whatever around the processes that we have in town. So, but I think it's valuable, especially with the questions we had today. I think it's, if you have curiosity about any of the issues, maybe what we could do is set it up where at each Minterm Matters, which is usually on Tuesday nights, the first Tuesday we were doing it.
Yes.
And we could get the email blast out to everyone and know the topics that we would, it's usually to council people that sit down with people and have the topics that we were ready to go. If those topics interest you, then you could meet us. And, you know, sometimes if we allow you to bail coffee and tea in the mornings, have coffee in the mornings at whatever time we deem to be, allows people to get there. Or we can have it at the Agora near the summer, or this summer, I guess it's kind of a hurry to do that. And, you know, the other different restaurants. So that's what that's about. So we... This council, I think that's...
I'm fine with it. I've, we've had a few good sessions anyway.
Yeah.
We have some issues coming up that affect a lot of people, like the water plant and what we're going to do with the mountain land that we own now.
Yeah, there's a lot of information that we all know and can depart in these sessions and have an in-depth discussion with you as long as you're, as long as the time you are here, there, there's meetings. So let's see what we can do.
Okay, we'll keep that going. Secondly, Cindy says she's been having a hard time scheduling for the council member video notices of council meetings. I wanted to see if council wants to continue that effort or if we should drop that communication effort.
I'd like to continue it. It's just a matter of when we need to do it. I mean, actually, after we know the agenda, what the agenda is. So probably be on a Friday or Monday, correct?
Correct, that was her last email that she sent out.
Okay. So how's the response, Benner? Like, do we have viewership numbers on there?
So the last session that she posted, she had only been doing before that to YouTube, and I asked her to post to Instagram, which received a much more favorable response. Either that or Tom Priest is just very popular because it received what I thought was a very good number of responses and worth potentially continuing if council has the time to do it. Okay. Okay, then we'll keep going with that, and Cindy will become more forceful in her emails to get folks scheduled.
The sign, I think, is really effective. I had many people texting me about tonight.
I was actually hopeful that we'll hear from some folks because I just said, throw the sign out saying we're talking about this, and hopefully some folks will come because our packet isn't as easy and exciting to read as just the sign that you drive by. So hopefully, we're helping, we're starting to get the word out about things. Anyone available to sign up for the High Five Media Board? This is the last call before we consider relinquishing our seat on the board.
How often do they meet?
I think once a month.
I can do it, but as on, but they have the board meetings on Monday, and I cannot do Mondays. So if board's willing to move it to a different day, let me know and hope.
I'm happy to email with JK to confirm dates and times to see if that's a possibility. And if you are not available, it sounds like maybe Gusty is?
Yeah, I probably could.
Thank you so much. I emailed out to everyone a letter from the Western Rail Coalition earlier today, looking to understand if the council is interested in a team doing a study to understand the validity of a passenger rail option from Glenwood Springs to Leadville. So you now know almost as much as I do about the entire thing. But this would be requesting from Governor Polis the ability and funding to conduct the study to learn more information about it. I can say two things. One, I talked to the CDOT Rails Division last week. They emphatically indicated that they will oppose any efforts to turn the rail into a trail. That was discouraging.
For what section?
Well, I asked specifically from the Minterm to Leadville section. I assume that they would include other sections as well, as they said their entire purpose is to keep that line open for future opportunities. I gave a similar look. Secondly, I asked the representative regarding the passenger rail option, what the time would be for a trip from Minterm to Leadville on a passenger line? And they said one hour, 10 minutes.
Lot of curbs on that train.
I'm the messenger. So I just bring this before you. They are looking to get this letter in front of Governor Polis within the next two weeks, and this was the only opportunity to bring it for consideration.
I would be suspicious of who is sponsoring this particular group, particularly light depending litigation involving the right of the Utah trains to carry the wax, hot waxy oil. As my understanding, in order to do that, they have to push some of their passenger trains over in our direction. So I would be suspicious that they're behind the... So I would be suspicious that they're behind the organization of this group.
Yeah, I did some research into the group after you sent that letter, because I'd never heard of me either. They seem to come out of nowhere, and they're just going to write policy emails. So, I mean, I write policy a lot of emails through various organizations, so we'll see where that goes. I did reach out through the VDMTA capacity and kind of give them some reasons that personally, and I think from VDMTA, which is the Vale Mountain Trails Association, why we would be more in favor of a soft surface trail use from the Minterm to Leadville segment, including steep inclines and the curbs, and the extensive cost means that like a commuter use or even tourist use will be very expensive and very slow. So it's not like we're decreasing the Leadville 500 traffic from, you know, turning that back into a rail line. Obvious impacts of Minterm, you know, dividing the community. We're trying to get more connections across the rail tracks and access to business and things like that. And I don't think that will really help get to where our communities indicated they want to go in a lot of the community planning process. I, you know, we've sent examples from the Alps, different areas, it sounds like caves over there right now, of some world-class bicycle touring routes that are over there utilizing old rail lines. And they are huge tourism drivers. It's amazing community use. It would be such an economic benefit to, you know, Minterm, Leadville, Red Cliff, and the surrounding communities in the summer. You know, you've got Campale National Monument, which was recently designated up there, so I don't think we need to be running railway through the new national monument. There's currently a ride-around on Highway 24. There's a lot of points. The car, you know, it's just, you can keep going and going. I don't take no for an answer, very easily, which I think a lot of people have learned. And we are certainly not going to step back our efforts to revive the 1996 Trail feasibility study, which included an MOU from Governor Romer at the time and the president of the UP. So I think we're going to continue to push that. We've had discussions with Bicycle Colorado, trails, Leadville, leaders and residents. And I think the time might come forward with this new information from CDOT to maybe organize kind of separately some opposition to that and really try to get public opinion behind the idea of soft surface trail instead of limited railroad use.
I, I would support passenger travel before I would the oil travel, but I don't see passenger trains going to get anybody on them because of the timeframe that it takes. We talked about this when I was on the Railroad Committee. The, nobody's going to spend an hour and 10 minutes on it, on basically a train to come down here. The only thing that might work is, is basically a scenic train, but you're probably going to only have people riding it in fall months, you know, to see the leaves change. So I don't, I really personally don't see it working either way as a train track.
I think for many of the reasons that Brian just enumerated, the harms of this way outweigh the benefits. And, you know, it is the steepest railroad track in the whole country, and it requires very, very, very powerful locomotives to pull the cars. And you combine that with winter weather. I just don't think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, unless they can somehow solve the technology of making that a high speed, it just doesn't make sense. I'd rather see trails. So if it means not supporting this letter and suggesting trails, that, that is my take for sure.
So what they are requesting is, would we can, would we support them doing a study on this, is my understanding. They're, they're not of private interest. This is the same coalition that got the steamboat train going, didn't it?
They, I am very unfamiliar with those efforts, but I believe similar people are involved.
The who, the people?
Similar entities.
Oh, yeah, okay. So I, I don't want to say no to the thing, because it's just a study. We're not committing anything, but they're going to, my, my, and, and a lot of questions need to be answered. If, my thought was, it's an electric train, and it's just, just thinking within our regional transportation system, it would just be another part of the multi-multiple transfer, public transportation that we could do. So, and what the, I mean, to Leadville and whatever, it's, it'd be nice if it would be a feasible commuter system. It is faster than I think what we were thinking, which is 15 minutes slower than driving a car. So, you know, they do the study, then, then we can look at what they came up, come up with, and then we'll know whether it's feasible or not. But I don't see any reason why we should say no, we're against the study, especially when we were still waiting for, you know, a lot, a lot of stuff has to happen. I mean, rails and trails is what I'd ultimately like to have. And whether the UP would let us, or whether CDOT would let us, or whatever, you know, we don't know. But I think if we're, if we're, as long as we're not, they're not expecting us to pay, help pay for the study, I don't see a problem with that.
I would just say this came up today. It wasn't advertised very much. And if, I have this sneaking suspicion that if we had talked to the entire Minterm community, that we're going to be discussing the potential reactivation of the rail line, we'd have a lot more people in this room and overwhelming opposition. So I'm going to stick with, I don't want anything to do with this.
The timing is, I think, is wrong, because it, it really muddies the water. Of course, a passenger train is feasible. That's a pretty low bar. The question is, do we want one or not? And with the litigation for the heavy crude oil train usage pending right now before the Supreme Court, which we, which absolutely has to have, be able to send passenger trains our way. I, I just think it muddies things up, and I can't think of any circumstance where having, bringing back the railroad benefits the town of Minterm as opposed to the trails that we all want.
You say bring back the railroad. It's, to me, this is, I mean, if, okay, so let's assume, for whatever reason, rails and trails not going to happen. I'm looking for anything other than seeing waxy crude coming through our valley. I don't care what it is, anything but that. You know, I mean, if UP is going to revive this train, the tracks, and they're, they're not going to revive themselves, like, on somebody's pay for it, then a passenger train, a commuter plane, whatever you want to call it, would tie that up, and we wouldn't have to worry about it anymore. So this is not UP, this is these guys. And, and, and like I say, we're not approving a damn thing, because we don't know enough information. They're trying to, this is to have, have, be on a ladder and going to policy and, we wanted you to study, you want to pay for it, or whatever, whatever their gig is. And, and I, I just hate to not be a part of a seat at the table if it starts gaining weight in five or 10 years or whatever. But, but, but once again, we would say no if it wasn't, if it was noisy, if it was inefficient, all the things that we don't want to have, and it's passenger-only. Don't, don't run at night, those kind of things. Anything that would, in any way, disturb our community.
I, I just hate to see us open the door to something that could be fairly catastrophic for the town. And again, I'm very suspicious about this, the timing of this group and the funding for them. And it's my understanding that there's no chance that the waxy crude will come through the town. That's a done deal. But the problem is being able to divert the other kinds of railroad traffic to our town. That's what I understand is the issue. So I would be adamantly opposed to any such committee. But I, I would be willing to take some time and look into who's really behind this.
Okay, so basically, we have to decide tonight because of the late hour that we found out, right?
Yes, I feel like I have direction.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Good.
Let's carry on. Next, I had one, anything else on the manager's report, any, any questions?
Do you feel you have direction?
Yes.
So I did, I did want to make one comment. I wanted to thank, that, that GOCO grant was awesome. When I was looking at it, I mean, the report, it was very well done. It's a grant application. We're not getting it yet. But, but I wanted to thank the organizations that endorsed it, including the Minterm Community Fund, the VDMTA, the Eagle River Fund, the Eagle River Coalition, and the Eagle Valley for Outdoor Movement.
Yes.
And so I want to thank them for, for joining us and endorsing the project.
Yes.
And with that, we will move on to special presentations. We have our Sheriff Van Beek here to talk to us.
We're actually going to start with that.
Hi, I'm Ashley Lefleur. I'm the Community Affairs Officer for the UConnie Sheriff's Office. We'll get the sheriff up here himself in just a moment. But I just wanted to come and say thank you for supporting our National Night Out event for years. And Jay has a presentation that he's going to queue up for us. So as you can see on this first slide, National Night Out, if you're not aware, it started in the 1980s as just a way to bring law enforcement and communities together, especially in positive circumstances. Because we know a lot of times if we're encountering you, it might be the worst day of your life. So we want to do everything that we can to build those relationships in a positive way. So Jay, we can go to that next slide. So this is an event that we bring out our law enforcement. You guys help us to provide free food. We get drink donations. And then we also have live music. This year, Cindy helped us out to make this our first zero-waste event with the Sheriff's Office, period, but also in, in Minterm for National Night Out. And that was part of our amazing Rocky Mountain Science Center that did that for us. And then on the next slide, you'll see, in addition to the free Rocky Mountain tacos that we had available, we also had some partners that helped us out with this event, which we couldn't do, you know, without them. So Jay, you can go to the next one here. So Eagle River Fire, obviously, is a huge, huge component of this. And if you go to the next slide, you can see they're, they're pretty popular. I'd like to check out the truck. And then we also had Vale Mountain Rescue, as well as the Eagle County Paramedic Services at the event this year. And then on the next slide, you can see a little glimpse at our entertainment. So we had Pat Hamilton as our live music. Face painting was clearly the winner of the popularity contest for her activities, and then just engagement with our first responders in the community. And then if we go to the next slide, Jay, just a, a thank you. We really appreciate your support of this event, and we ask for your consideration in supporting it for 2025 as well. And then while we have you, I just wanted to update you on one of the other events. I think you're aware that we do, but just in case, Shop with a Cop is our next big, big event that's coming up. So this is something that has been going on for a very long time. And our own Lisa Vasquez, you might recognize her, but she has really been the one to begin this event with the Sheriff's Office and then continue to raise the bar each and every year. So what we do with this event is we start off with providing a complete family holiday meal basket for each kid who is involved. So if you can go to the next slide, Jay, you'll see the amount of food that this takes. So typically, on this side of the county, we, we do this for about 50 kids each Christmas. And now we're expanding in Algebel as well, so we have those community members. So this year, we're looking at providing this for about 75 kids across the county. And then as we go to our next slide, once we have the holiday meal baskets built, we coordinate buses, and we pick up the kids, and we take them shopping at Walmart. And then you can go to the next slide, some more shopping pictures. They have a great time. Each, each child is paired with a first responder, so maybe law enforcement, maybe our firefighters. And they, last year, we're given $150 apiece to pick out gifts for their family. Sometimes it's for themselves. One of the first events that I was part of, we had a 12-year-old girl who was buying essentials for herself. She was buying sports bras and socks and clothes. So we have that. And then we also have, you know, we had another kid last year that was insistent that his teacher needed Grinch pajamas. So you have the camut. But all the kids are chosen based on, not necessarily need financially, but based on whether or not they could use a positive experience with law enforcement. So going to the next slide, Jay, we, after we go shopping, we have a really cool escort from our local law enforcement. We, it really scares people that aren't aware of what's going on with this event. They're around all the cars that light up at the same time as they head to Four Eagle Ranch. But we escort them for a dinner that you can see on the next slide at Four Eagle Ranch. And Santa comes, and we wrap all the presents that they, that they pick out at Walmart. And then on this final, the final slide, it's just more of Santa and wrapping, "Thank you, Jenny." And, and basically, it's just a really heartwarming event, and it's something that we do. And, and we do have kids from Minterm that participate in this event. So we just wanted to make you guys aware that this is one of the other things that we are doing. So we wanted to say thank you very much for your support for National Night Out. Sheriff also has something to say thank you for you, and then I'll open the floor to him, so if you have any questions.
Before I, before I bring this up, I wanted to emphasize that we actually work very closely with the school district to help us identify those kids, because I actually have a lot more interaction with them. So the school district helps us identify the kids that could use a positive experience and so on. So again, it's that collaboration, working together with them to do this. And so we're always hoping to expand and do it. And we've already got plans for December 10th this year, I think. Out of my memory, it's a little cloudy sometimes, but I think we're doing it December 10th again this year. And so we're real excited about this. But back to the National Night Out. I don't know, I'm going to give this to you, but it's for the whole group. But we just wanted to say thank you from the Sheriff's Office and a little memorial and picture of some of the activities that we had. And for the town of Minterm for, for helping sponsor this and so on. So we greatly appreciate it, because again, it's a heartwarming event for us. But you guys helping, and this just expands it that much more, makes it that much better for everybody, so.
Thank you, Sheriff.
So not wanting to take too much trouble during this time, but again, I'm here, so any questions?
I have a question. Just want to say thank you for doing this. It's a, this is the first year I've ever gone to it, and it's a great event. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. I mean, it's, we worked with Michelle, we helped coordinate all this, and it's been really good working with the town on, on everything else that we do as well. And we look forward to doing these things in the future, so thank you.
I also wanted to commend Deputy Peterson. He was at the last council meeting that we had, and he got an applause from the whole crowd before he left on, on an issue we were having.
They applaud when he left? Is that what you said?
How often does that happen? So, yeah, he, he, he was very open about, you know, our, our concern with, with the speed of, of our main street and so forth. And he, he gave, gave really good information to everybody, and so he's, I want to commend him for that. And then I was just curious, did you ever get any idea of whether you'd ever be able to get jurisdiction in the White River National Forest?
It's still lingering.
Still lingering.
We don't know.
Okay. Keep pushing.
Yeah, yeah, we will. So, but other than anything else, otherwise, well, thank you, everybody. We greatly appreciate, we appreciate, I appreciate being partners with, with the town of Minterm. We'll look forward to it. And we're going to stick around for just a couple more minutes, but we've had a very, very long day and a long couple weeks, so don't take offense if we kind of sneak out of here, so thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay.
Next, we have Chief Bauer, Eagle River Fire Department.
Well, Chief Bauer's coming up. I'd like to say a special thanks to Chief Bauer, as well as the Sheriff's Office. Both organizations are taking part in our Safe Streets for All Stakeholders Group. We had our first meeting yesterday, and it was really great to have that. Sorry, it's been a long week. And it was really great to have both of their contributions. Deputy Peterson is sitting on for the Sheriff's Office. And we had Carl, Chief Bauer himself with us for the meeting as well. So this is a really helpful thing, and it's very impactful for when we create this plan and when we're applying for grants, that these organizations are included in this process. So thank you to both of your organizations.
You're very welcome. It's a great initiative. Happy to be a part of it. So for those of you whom I've not met, I'm Carl Bauer, and I have the honor of serving as the fire chief for the Eagle River Fire Protection District, which is your fire department. And it's hard to believe that it was almost a year ago now that I came to town council to inform you that we had pulled from the November to inform you that we had pulled from the November ballot our mill levy ballot measure. And we did that in response to the very understandable and real concerns over the precipitous rise in property values, and then, of course, would follow on to that, the increase in property taxes. And so we did pull that that mill levy ballot measure from the November ballot. And then in the interim between then and now, the district's mill levy reduced from 9.32 last year to 6.618 this year. And did that by formula, because that is the mill levy system under which the district operates since 2012, when the voters voted in the supplemental mill that is tied to inflation and growth. So in other words, the district does not retain increases in assessed value, only increases in growth and inflation. So why am I here today? Well, the problems that prompted us to put that mill levy question on last year's November ballot, which was subsequently pulled, remain. They have not gone away. In fact, they've just gotten worse because of inflation. The inflationary index for the district's current mill levy is tied to the Denver Boulder Lakewood inflation. Now, except for the past couple of years, that usually hovers somewhere around 2.5%. Well, historically, the cost of apparatus, the cost of firefighting by apparatus, I mean, fire engines of all types, the cost of firefighting equipment rises about 6% a year. We're now paying about 1.25 million dollars for a fire engine. And so the district is constrained ever increasingly because of the escalating operating costs. So trying to compensate for that, the district will place on this November's ballot a sales tax question, not a mill levy for property tax, but a sales tax question in the amount of 0.79%, which equates to 79 cents on a $100 purchase. And that would not include groceries, prescription medications, and some other exemptions because the legislation that was passed this year, which allows fire districts to pursue voter-approved sales tax, ties any sales tax that is approved to the state's sales tax system, not the local system. So those exemptions would exist. We do see, unfortunately, further erosion to the district's property tax revenue. Just this past month, the legislature's passed HB 24B 1001, which the governor signed into law. We will see over the next several years continued reduction in property tax revenue to special districts, the fire district in particular. So the base upon which the fire district operates, which is currently property tax, will continue to erode over time, further limiting the ability of the fire district to maintain the levels of service that it provides now. And that's our worry. And that's why we have placed on the November ballot the sales tax at 0.79. So the reason I'm here is to explain to you why the Fire Board has placed this on the November ballot and to ask if council would consider supporting it through a resolution. So that the rest of the communities that we serve, including Mentor, see that there is rationale behind this. We're trying to be very sensitive to communities' needs, at the same time recognizing that the cost of providing fire protection just continues to escalate. So that is a very brief overview and an explanation of what you will see on the countywide ballot. This will not be a separate ballot. It'll be on the countywide ballot for a sales tax at 0.79. Any questions I can answer?
Thank you, Chief. The only question I really had was concerning the percentage because I wasn't in the packet, and you just answered that. So if we're looking at, where are we at now, eight and a half percent? Sales tax everywhere, the whole.
Jay?
8.9.
8.9.
8.9. So we would be paying a sales tax, except for the groceries, the pharmacy, whatever the other things that's outside of that. So that 7.9 would be added to the 8.9%.
7.9 would be added, correct.
Okay. My question would be, maybe it's because the groceries aren't counted and all that kind of stuff. I'm on the core transit board, and we get a, now, now that we've merged with Eco Transit, we have a 1% sales tax, and that generates about 23 million a year. I'm just wondering where the disconnect is.
Well, our, great question. So our analysis shows that a 0.79 will generate somewhere around 6.8 million dollars, because recognize that the fire district does include some of the same areas that are included in the transportation authority. So it's for only Eagle River Fire. And if that would go to pay for things like ensuring we can purchase apparatus, fire engines, when they need to be replaced, we can purchase self-contained breathing apparatus, for example, when they need to be replaced, radios. Then we can continue to employ the same number of firefighters that we have and then add to that staff, as we know we're going to need over the next several years, given the growth that's occurring. So we want to stay ahead of these things and not fall behind. And that's why we ultimately landed on 0.79. Now, what I would say is that this is up 2.79. So the Fire Board can adjust that downwardly as might be appropriate.
And oh, so the difference is that it's just that a sales tax raise for whoever is using in an area of your service?
Well, it would, whatever is assessed would apply across the entire fire district. So there wouldn't be a difference in sales tax application in, let's say, Avon versus Mentor. But it is up 2.79, so it's not locked in at 0.79.
So Vale, for instance, that would not increase their sales tax because they don't have their own fire department?
No, it would not include, would not include Vale.
Okay, I just need to understand.
It would only include the communities that are within the fire district's boundaries.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I mean, we've always been very supportive of the Fire Department.
Very much so.
And it's been quite an important service for everybody. And it's up to the voters to decide from there, so.
So staff is looking for direction. If you would like to see us bring forward a resolution to support the ERFPD-proposed sales tax ballot measure for the November 5th election.
Would be okay with resolution?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions I can answer?
I think we're done.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much. There you go.
Thank you all. Okay. Next, we have the Eagle Valley Childcare Proposal. Sarah?
Hi, y'all. Did the presentation make it through to you? Okay, Michelle?
Yes. Jay, can you please bring up the childcare presentation for us?
Can, just to say.
Thank you.
So in the meantime, hello again. For other folks, I'm the Executive Director for Eagle Valley Childcare Association. We are the organization that is working on refurbishing and reopening the former Pooh Corner childcare spot as the Mentor Family Enrichment Center, as a primarily infant and toddler care center. And we sent, I sent I C V, as if I have a staff of many as I. I sent you all a business partnership proposal, mainly due to the number of Mentor residents that I heard from who are looking for solutions specific to themselves for childcare. So you can go ahead and hop to the next slide. Just an overview, I want to make sure you know where this is coming from, what the need is, and kind of what the background is for you in an economic perspective and how we see it connecting with the Town of Mentor's goals in the coming years. So to the next slide, please. Thank you. So as you know, I talked to y'all a few months ago. Our current situation in the Valley for childcare is not the greatest. We have very limited, particularly infant toddler care locally, with no licensed care options in Mentor. And licensed care includes both center care and home-based care. It's not to say that families aren't finding care through friends and family, through nannies, babysitters, those types of things, which are all incredibly valuable in, you know, the ecosystem of childcare. But for those families who are looking specifically for licensed childcare options, which tend to be the most affordable options, there's just, there's nothing up here right now. And to kind of recap a little bit from what we talked about last time, at this point, I currently have for Eagle Valley Childcare Association, we have approximately 350 infants and toddlers on our waitlist. So it is definitely a community need, and there's a good number of Mentor families on that list because I hear from them every week, asking me where we're at with things. So part of our solution, obviously, we're not going to be opening 350 infant toddler spots. I might not be up for that. But we are looking at opening the Mentor Family Enrichment Center to provide care for infants and toddlers, and it'll be for about 32 children. So we'll have an infant room, that we have the goal of serving eight children, and then two toddler rooms, a young toddler room for 10, and an older toddler room for 14, to keep kids up to that age of three, at which point childcare options become much more numerous across the valley, in large part because preschool is significantly easier to offer, and also thanks to the state's UDK efforts of universal preschool. We've had many, many spots for preschool open. We continue to see a dire need for infants and toddlers. The next slide. So the proposal that I sent to you is basically that EDCCA entered into a business partnership with the Town of Mentor. We have business partnerships with a variety of other organizations, including some town entities across the valley. So this is kind of an old hat for us, something that might be new for you all, that in this partnership, we would make sure that 10 of those childcare spots, upon opening, go specifically to Mentor residents in return for the Town of Mentor helping us financially with the cost of getting that space up to licensable standards and making sure that it is a high-quality facility for those families. You might ask, why not just offer those spots to Town of Mentor families? Isn't that the nice thing to do? And I would love to if I didn't have a waitlist of 350 families. Our Edwards location, Edwards residents do not have priority. At our Edwards location, Vale residents do not have priority. At our Vale location, the only folks who have any priority waitlist access are those who are employees of our current business partners. So this is kind of a solution to that of the number of Mentor families I've had asking, hey, how do we get priority access to this? It's in our community. We really need it. We're kind of out of the way from everything else. So I'm coming to you with that proposal. And then in terms of how this benefits you, if you want to go ahead and slide on down to the next slide, Jay. So what we see with early childhood and it coming specifically into a community is that there's economic benefits for the individual families. We see across the board when studies are done, increased workforce participation, whether that's because parents or guardians are able to re-enter the workforce because they finally have childcare, or if it's because they're able to be at work more consistently because they have more consistent childcare. We just see that increased workforce participation, as well as the increased household income. And families just see a better work-life balance as that stress is lifted from them of knowing who is caring for their child every day, if their child is safe and well loved. There's also, let us slide on down again, long-term community benefits. We see higher education and career outcomes for kiddos who attend childcare. We have better health outcomes. And we also see, when we do research on early childhood, that this is one of the most effective leverage points for creating strong communities. The reason for that is that when families know that their children are taken care of during the day, parent stress is reduced. That helps create healthy, strong families. And healthy, strong families are the foundation for healthy, strong communities because those families are able to show up and participate and volunteer and do things because they're not getting to their weekends and evenings so burnt out that all they can do is survive. And we've seen it over and over again in studies. We've seen it over and over again in other communities that when a community gets high-quality childcare, the community as a whole ultimately benefits. And if we slide down again, if you're a numbers person, don't worry. They've also done studies on those numbers. The return on investment in early childhood education is one of the best in terms of community investments. We see that comprehensive, high-quality birth-to-five programs deliver about a 13% return on investment. Obviously, I'm not proposing birth to five because three to five in this valley is doing okay. They're doing a little bit better. But birth to three, we're really struggling. And if you're wondering how that 13% translates to dollars, it's between four and $16 on every dollar invested. So it's a pretty good investment return. On a more local level, we scroll down again. It also is something that I see as being deeply aligned with Mentor's true art. The strategic plan for the Town of Mentor says that you want to leverage Mentor's assets to benefit and maintain our funky, proud, uniquely classic mountain town where people grow roots through creating opportunities and community engagement. And I don't know a single thing that will help to your families to grow roots and feel like they can stay here, than them feeling that they can have families and stay here and raise those families. The number one reason I have people drop off our waitlist is because they've given up on childcare and they have moved out of the area. And we just don't want to see that. We don't want to see people leaving because they can't get the services they need. We want people to be able to stay and thrive in these places. So your support is crucial. If you want to go to the last slide here. Our families and us as providers alone can't carry this burden of supplying communities with early childhood education. The tuition rates that I charge my families are really bumping up against the top of their ability to pay. And with those tuition rates, I am barely able to make a decent wage to my teachers, much less a living wage. It's a huge problem within our industry. So we need to have the local support of businesses, of towns, of counties, and have everyone start stepping up to help out and make sure that these things happen instead of looking to everybody else and saying, well, what about you? Well, what about you? What about you? It's time that we all look to ourselves and say, what about me? How am I going to help make sure those families are getting the care that they need? That's it. What questions do you have? Yeah.
Look, it seems obvious that affordable, available childcare is needed so badly. My only question was that you said that if we, that the town gave you $100,000, that you would hold 10 places with opening for Mentor residents.
Yeah.
But my question is, if those residents move, then move on, or graduate, or quit, whatever, we don't get any more.
What happens to those spots, basically?
Yes.
And that is another option. I made you up this proposal as like a very short term. If you want to try it, we do have longer-term business partnerships with both the Town of Vale and the Town of Avon. So that's something where they're providing us with either contributions, whether they're financial or in-kind, so that they continue to have, they like to use it for their town employees. I'm proposing that you use it for your town residents, so slightly different there. But they continue to provide not the same necessarily type or level of support, though they are providing support for this opening. But they continue to have an ongoing business contract with us that we renew every year.
That seems to me a much more attractive proposition.
Who else?
So. Did I pull where we're going? Sorry, were you going to say that?
No, I didn't know if we were going online or.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, I was, you know, Vale and Avon are, have a budget about 100,000 the size of our.
Uh huh.
Our, we are very rich in a lot of ways, in our beauty, the environment we live in. Our residents are fantastic, but we are, this town government. Our residents are fantastic, but we are, this town government is not rich. Could be in a few years, but not right now. So I don't think our budget for twenty twenty-five, we're starting that process in October, can handle it, but it will be a discussion item.
And I think that's where if the town council wants to come back and, you know, negotiate and say, hey, like, we could do this. Would you consider this as a business partnership? That can be a back and forth that we go through, but it just has to start somewhere.
And I'm wondering if the Minterne Community Fund could contribute and do some fundraising. So.
It's worth a try. Me, Dr. Diane, Terry, let's see. The other, the other side of that is, okay, so that guarantees these ten of our families will, now is that per child? Is that ten children or is it ten families?
Ten children. It would be ten children.
Ten children, okay. So that would be ten, and how many total are you going to be able to have?
It would be a max of thirty-two children.
Thirty-two children, okay. So that would leave, I'm assuming that those twenty, other twenty-two children are not going to pay ten thousand dollars to get, get a, get a point, so. I'm just trying to see, it's going to be, we're, we're paying a hundred thousand dollars to get a minimum amount of our family's coverage. So that's, that's what I'm looking at. I was, I'm bearing, the whole town wants you to be successful here. It's just disappointing that, you know, maybe only half of our families that want, that want to use your services won't be able to. And that's, I'm just bummed out about that.
Yeah, it does also come down to other organizations and entities who are supporting the opening of this center. Also, you know, wanting a piece of that opening pie. I can't go around and offer all opening spots to anyone or any one single organization. So it is unfortunate. It's one of those things where ultimately we need ten more centers this size, minimum, to be meeting the needs of our community. But right now, we're only able to offer this one, and we know that that creates limits on what we're able to do for the community. It's a limit that I'm very familiar with. I get a lot of phone calls and emails every week. Asking me, you know, our nanny's quitting at the last minute. Can you get us in? Everyone has their reason and their story why they should get the spot. And we have to try and be as fair as we can and stick to a waitlist that is admittedly, you know, a system that doesn't feel fair to anybody. But it's as fair as we can make it. And setting aside, you know, a third of the slots is as fair as we can make it. When we have others who are trying to do the same.
Okay, and you remember, you say in your letter, we're open to discussing a long-term arrangement that give Minterne residents employees access. So maybe we just need to have further discussions with you. And just see, see what we can do there.
Yeah.
We definitely want to have you in town. We just want to make sure we can get enough benefit from our citizens, for our citizens, and that's, that's my main concern. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I, first of all, hundred percent support, like, as a parent who's like halfway through this and have a lot of friends around here who were impacted by the closing. So I, I really do believe we need to figure out a way to support this and whatever we can. I did have some questions around like how you format these business partnerships. And I know, like, we're not the resorts and we're not the top of some of those. You know, like the ten spots, so you said, like, there's three hundred and fifty people on the waiting list. Ten to twenty percent of them might have Minterne ties, so like, if we didn't sponsor this, like, how many people are in there from Minterne in the first place?
Yeah.
You know, and does that ten spots represent like additionality for our money? Or how, you know, kind of how does that break up?
Yeah, so right now, I did a survey back in the beginning of the summer of our waitlist families, right? To see kind of where people were living. And you're right, it's about twenty percent of families who responded, right? And I had about a thirty percent response, so like semi quasi-scientific response numbers. But it was about twenty percent of families were from Minterne. Comparatively, about twenty percent are from the town of Vale. So you have about the same number of families. They're in a similar situation for infant toddler care, where it in their town really. So, yeah, you're looking at about ten to twenty percent. The way we structure that partnership and have the way that the priority access is applied is really something that we tailor to each business partner. So for example, for example, with Vale Health, I have to go through and verify each employee before they're allowed up onto the waitlist, the priority waitlist, because that's what they have asked for us to do. If you all wanted to say, hey, you know, we want to send out a mass communication to town of Minterne residents, letting them know, you know, that if they, they want to do this, they can fill out this form and submit this particular type of verification or residency, whether that's bills or, you know, whatever, whatever works for you. We can do that to verify. And then typically what happens is when we pull a group on as a priority waitlist, what those entities have asked us to do is have anybody who is already on the general waitlist just get pulled up in that order into a priority waitlist. So, and it typically is, translates to about a twelve to twenty-four month less of a wait for families. I often have folks go from number one hundred and fifty-one to number three. Kind of a thing when they go from general waitlist up to the priority waitlist. So it definitely gets people in more quickly if we're looking at ten people or ten children coming in. It would be taking everyone from the waitlist, anyone who wants to jump in on the train, pulling them up to look at a separate list, and then saying, okay, we're going to work from the top down and go from there of like, okay, you're being offered a spot. Are you taking the spot? Yes, no, okay, next one, and working our way down. But also letting people keep their place on the waitlist. So if they don't make that top ten and you all decided to not go with a long-term partnership, that they don't lose out in where they're at right now. Because our goal is never for people to drop on the waitlist, because that's sad.
Is your VR and Vale Health business partnership yearly stuff public info? Like what their amounts are that they contribute to the award?
I believe it's on our nine nineties, so.
Okay. Um, cool. And then you have, this would be number four in the network if, once it's open?
This would be our third, third.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, are you doing any, are there any plans to like try to shuffle or offer the chance to shuffle around? So like, given there's Minterne people like myself that are taking our kids down valley, obviously to a different one, but are you, are you switching people in to try to get like Minterne people in the Minterne ones? So we're advising driving in neighborhoods and things?
So we have, with the way our waitlists work, current families are at the very, very top of everything. So anytime we have an opening, we always ask current families first. And that's something I've been in communication with current families of, of like, hey, this is what's coming down the pipeline, like, these are the ages we'll be serving. You know, is anyone interested in potentially transferring? And that's something I've been working with on families. Honestly, most of the families at this point who have children of that infant toddler age are still on the waitlist. They're not in our centers or they're close enough to preschool age that they're like, I'd rather not move my kid again, like, we're just going to stay here. We'll ride it out for six more months and then they're going to be in preschool anyways, and this is the better fit for that. So it is something we'd offer to our internal families first. And that would not be counted within those ten. That's part of why I'm not like, let's give away thirty-two spots. So I'm like, well, I have a few internal families who are considering it, that I know would want to be transferred over before any other spot got filled.
Okay, and then.
But it's like li- literally less than a handful.
Yeah, and then do you, sorry, I have a couple more. Do you have a priority for siblings? So like, say you get in the ten spots, then is the sibling a happy person?
We do, we do also do sibling priority.
They're on the priority list as well.
Because it is considered quality care to have parents not have to do, you know, five drop-offs.
Very helpful.
It is.
Cool. And I guess, yeah, I, I kind of, I agree with these guys, you know, when, when you need the money or can it be just split or deferred? Or could it be raised in part and, or could it be part of a longer-term thing? It's pretty important in this town because we all think that we should support this, but we have a, I think there's other towns that spend more on flowers and roundabouts than we have an entire town budget, so.
I understand.
Yeah, so just wanted to make sure you understand that, that.
Absolutely. Coming from a small nonprofit land.
Yeah.
Will we understand tight budgets?
Do you have any other business partners lined up right now through the Minterne site?
Yeah, we are still working with Vale Health as a business partner. The town of Vale is a current business partner who is continuing their support for this. Town of Avon is tapping out on it. Yeah, there are new ones. And then Eagle County is also supporting us.
I think the last time, I'm sorry, I, I think the last time we talked to you, you said around the first of the year. Is that still your target for opening?
Right now, we're looking at potentially being able to open as early as November.
Okay.
Obviously, that's all contingent on staffing, on funding. And we want to open as early as we can because we know there's families who are just really scraping by with childcare. But if we have to push it to the beginning of the year, then that's, that's what we'll do.
And the last thing, I just wanted to echo what Earl had said about, you know, we have a real small budget. A thou- and a hundred thousand is a big chunk, and we have a bridge that we're looking at that's going to need some major repair and upgrades and maybe even a full replacement. And, you know, we just, we got to look at the whole thing. So it just, you know, I understand the need for it, but a hundred thousand is a lot from a small town.
Yeah.
And I just had one more question, how it works. So if a Minterne family is way down valley and opening happens, the Minterne family would be moved, could move up to Minterne? And that would count as one of the ten spots?
If they're with our, if they're with one of our current centers. So the only center we have down valley is Miller Ranch Childcare in Edwards. And that's where I'm saying that that's a current family. I wouldn't be counting that in the ten spots. Because I already have, you know, I think two families from that center who have talked to me about potentially moving. And one of them were like, eh, actually, we'd rather just move to the Vale centers closer to work. So it's really not a large number of families at this point, and I wouldn't be counting it towards those ten. Yeah, they're our only down valley center.
I just had an operational question. So back in the day when I had kids of the appropriate age there, we basically all needed a couple of days a week for daycare. Do you get that? And how do you, if like, say if we had five kids that only needed two days a week, and does that allow more kids to take part in a more part-time?
Potentially. So what we're seeing as a trend is that more and more families are needing a minimum of four days a week. Most of our families are at least a Monday through Thursday or a Tuesday through Friday kind of gig. We do have some families who do part-time, and that works for them, especially if they have parents in medical community. You know, our nurses work some really crazy hours and some really crazy shifts. So sometimes they only need three days a week. And then we're able to cobble those together with another family who maybe only needs two days a week or who's needs five days a week but is willing to take two days a week in the hope that more days will open up than will be offered to them. Because like I said, current families, as we have days open, our site directors know all who wants what, who needs what, and we're able to offer those things to families as they open up. And so that's where there is that potential. If you're saying, yeah, we're paying for, you know, this is for ten full-time spots. Great, a full-time spot is five days a week. So maybe that's a two-day-a-week family and a three-day-a-week family counting as one spot. Does that make sense? Because when I say thirty-two, I'm just talking full-time equivalency for the sake of simplicity, but the reality is.
For a little flexibility.
Yeah, the reality is that we'll have more than thirty-two children enrolled at any given time. It's just maximum thirty-two on-site at any given time. Yeah.
Okay, so I guess we need to give staff some direction. But I'm, I'm thinking if council approves that we should, as we go through the budget process, you know, and, and we can be, show up at those things, it'd be very helpful. But, and just see what we can work out as far as a longer-term partnership that, that can allow us to kind of spread the pain. If that's, if it works out, so. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, and maybe we should approach community.
They don't agree any, don't you? Yeah, I think we can do some, maybe do some, they're, they're a fundraising organization or something, so we can maybe they can help out.
And I'd say too, if there's any, any services or like volunteer days or anything that we can reach out to the community and come together and have like a fundraising, I don't know what all you need to do over there.
Well, this is not my way. It's the outdoor space.
Yeah, this community will come together to help, so let us know and we'll help organize that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, next on the agenda is ordinance twenty, series twenty twenty-four. An ordinance amending chapter sixteen zoning and chapter nineteen historic preservation for the Minterne municipal code.
Mr. Mayor, so this is second reading of an ordinance to allow increased flexibility for structures that are designated as a historic structure. There have been seven options provided within this ordinance to find that flexibility. We expect continued discussions at the Historic Preservation Commission on more opportunities to come forward to find ways that we can work with historically preserved structures to find flexibility in how they are used. But these seven were initially brought forward, taken through Historic Preservation Commission, then through the Planning Commission, and now to you for second reading. We do have property owners awaiting the answer of this ordinance to see what, if anything, they can do further with their properties, so a timely decision is appreciated. If anyone has any questions about the seven options, which include the elimination of two sets of design review guidelines, the elimination of potentially redundant approval requirements, the allowing for historically designated structures in the downtown corridor to have the immediate ability to function as short-term rentals on all floors, encourage historic preservation reinvestment as part of the Downtown Development Authority Operations Plan, require a minimum of two nominators for a structure to be nominated for historic designation, create a process whereby property owners can determine if their structure would be historically designated without necessarily supporting such a designation. And seventh is allow residential in the downtown character area on the back fifty percent ground floor of historically designated commercial buildings to create live-work opportunities.
Okay, so thank you, Michelle. We can start the discussion.
I'm good.
Ryan?
I continue to be against it because I don't think a row of short-term rentals on Main Street is what we want. But we've gone through this. We don't need to beat a dead horse anywhere.
Yeah, okay. I may have had a second thought about that because that it's requires amending the design guidelines as well. And I'm just, I'm not sure if I want to break that model or not now. I think it's, it's the only alternative I can think of that would allow them to meet the goals of what we're only trying to do on the one hundred block. But at the same time, there may be other options that we can explore. Such as, you know, I mean, I, I was going to recommend, you know, at some point to, for a future agenda item, was to review the design guidelines to, to see if, if they're still relevant in the way we need them to be. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not talking about trying to push this down the road. I'm, I think we need to make a decision tonight. But option three, I'm just not sure if we, we should maybe look at the guidelines and, and option three at the same time to make sure that we've, we've thought through this properly. And what I would, I would like to see is that we move forward with the PNZ's recommendation and leave number three out. And, and then when we have time on our agenda, future agenda items, go into a more thoughtful process about that as we look, as we review the design guidelines. That's just, I came to my, that's my question.
What number of the short term was?
It's a short, I was three.
Yeah, that's, that's the one that I. Yeah, that's, that's the one that I had.
I'd be okay with that too. I mean, honestly, I had thoughts about it last night, but then figured it'd bring a little revenue in, you know, being a short-term rental, but I mean, if we have other options.
Yeah, and, you know, I think, I think we can come up with a couple more options that may make more sense, perhaps, and if we don't, if we go ahead and make this decision without it, then when that next time around would be? Maybe, maybe next year, early next year, first quarter. We can make, just, just make sure that we're doing it the right way.
I'm in favor of it staying. I think these historic homes need that kind of flexibility, and I don't think there's that many that it's going to hinder our commercial district. And I think short-term rentals are kind of like a hotel, and they, they're tourists and people who buy from the local businesses. So I, I think that, I think option three makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I guess what I, I was hoping is there's a couple of options that would increase maintaining the historic building, but also doing something like with our zoning regs to maybe in, in the back half of the unit to be able to perhaps, you know, give, give less setback requirements or even no setbacks on the side in the back to allow them to more space to which they could make it a viable structure.
I, I think that can be added on, I don't think they're inconsistent.
But yeah, that's my feeling, is if we have a chance to process that, those ideas, and while we're looking at the guidelines, because I think there's maybe some guidelines to look at with the guidelines, then, then, you know, we would be consistent, in other words, we, we give that option, and then three months later, we come up with some other options, they're gonna say, wait a minute, you know, that's better than what I was starting to do, you know, that kind of thing.
But I think people need some answers now, so. I, I, I think this is minimal, and we can consider other things down the road.
Yeah, I feel like we can always add an amendment later if that becomes an issue, but I, I think keeping option three in now makes a lot of sense, and I know Kate and Tom aren't here, but they voted yes on having those on the first reading, so if I remember correctly.
That's a good point. But they haven't heard my, what I said either, because I'm, we can't, we've got to go ahead and move forward with this, we can't keep that hanging, can't push it back anymore. It's not like we're not coming, gonna put it back in. Anyway, okay, let's, what do you think, Gussie, are you?
Honestly, I, I was kind of on the fence on it, I'd go with the majority on it, but I'm okay with leaving it in there right now, and then if we look at it down the road during a few months, make an adjustment then. I know that, you know, this is what we've been kind of proposing, and I don't like changing it right in the middle of it.
Yeah, okay. Brian? You're, you're. Okay, let's get the direction, go ahead and move forward with.
This is an ordinance that requires a public hearing.
Yes, it does. And at this time, I'll open it up for public hearing. Any questions or clarifications you would like to say in what this discussion was about? Is there anyone that has any questions? Okay. Jay, anybody online?
No, sir. Excuse me, Mr. Larry Stone has a question. Hang on. There you go.
About this issue?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Larry Stone, one fifty-two Main Street. Thank you, Lynn, and I appreciate you guys leaving option number three in there, I think it's probably the only way we're gonna keep some of those properties occupied. I think that's a very good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And roll call, please.
We're gonna make the motion.
Yeah.
Hi, I moved to approve ordinance twenty, series twenty twenty-four, ordinance amending chapter sixteen zoning and chapter nineteen historic preservation of the MMC.
Eric seconds.
Motion by Lynn, second by Eric, roll call, please.
Gussie, aye.
Brian, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Eric, aye.
And Earl, aye. All right. Next item on the agenda is the popular one. We're now looking at designing the work done to pave Taylor, Taylor Drive Road, and so we'll start that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So back when the Minterne North PUD hearings were taking place, residents from Taylor requested the paving of Taylor Street as part of that effort. Since the Minterne North PUD does not have driveways accessing Taylor, the Town of Minterne identified the desire to have this paved as opposed to the developer. So with that, the town further committed to having it paved in a timely manner, which meant not waiting for construction use tax to come in from the development to cover those costs, but rather using town reserves to ensure the paving could happen quickly. With me this evening is Jeff Spinell with Intermountain Engineering. Jeff would like to start the design and engineering of what could become the paving of Taylor Street for construction in twenty twenty-five. However, we need direction as staff as to what residents of Taylor Street and the council would like to see done from the perspective of a new paving. So of course, we want to figure out what works for the residents, what works for the community, so we are looking for feedback. It's so exciting to see folks here tonight instead of on the first night after we've started paving. So hopefully, we can meet the desires of what the residents on Taylor would like to see for the future paving projects. So before we got started on any design and engineering, we wanted to open it up to see what folks were hoping for, for their street.
And so at this point, I would like to open it up to the public, and we'll take comment on, on any concerns that you have about the paving, the parking, the layout of the road, which is on a lot of, which is not on a lot of property, or private citizens have parking on the road, road right of way, so. At this point, I'd like to open it up, and I'd ask you to just give us your name, your address. We'll give each, each person three minutes to discuss. Can somebody turn that clock over there?
Hello, Michael Gutino, one ten Taylor Street. First, and I could cede my time, I've got a jump drive with some pictures. Am I too late, or could I give them to someone, cede my time, and come back when those pictures potentially could be loaded?
I'm sorry.
I'd like to.
He wants to plug a thumb drive into the display.
Thank you.
And you're just now bringing them to me.
I, if I'm too late, then I would load it. I, I didn't think of it until four thirty today.
Didn't think of it, no problem. I'm happy to take that up to Jay, and we can try to get that loaded, so if we want to give a few more folks some time to talk while he gets that.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Hey, everybody, Rob Gushewski, five sixty Taylor. And yeah, I think Taylor Street is long overdue, that lifespan of that asphalt has run its course. It's pothole-ing all over the place, it's not quite as bad as the Avon Post Office, but we're close. But from, you know, I, I like to think back to the first version of this Minterne North development, and remember all the comments, they wanted to realign the street, they wanted to add sidewalks, and there was a lot of feedback at that time to hold back. There, a lot of folks on Taylor Street depend on the kind of the status quo of, of the parking, be it in the right of way or whatnot. And sidewalks were opposed at that time, I think they still are, at least from the folks I've talked to. My, my boys with the Robinsons down at five thirty-one, and we talked about it last night. We think, you know, one of Michelle's questions was what kind of traffic calming would you like to see? Personally, I think the speed bumps are lame, and we much prefer the dips, and plus, the dips don't have to be removed in the winter, because the snowplow can get over the dips in the winter. I like, would like to make people think of Capitol Street, Eagle, those big dips that, you know, it's year-round, public works doesn't have to fuss with it, we already have two dips on Taylor Street, and they work well. It's nice to have the dips for a little traffic calming. But overall, my, my suggestion would be to try and keep the footprint the same as it is. Otherwise, we're trying to alter people's driveways and existing grades from, I guess you would call it five sixty-four Bumgarten's old place down to Past Duncan's, I guess, down to Hani, Hani's place or Darren's place. That could be a good place for a pan. We have a lot of runoff that's between the properties and the right of way. But for sure, Michelle, thank you for sending that email saying, think about curbs, think about sidewalks, think about gutters, think about traffic calming. So we were able to talk about that the other night. But no, I think this is great, it's definitely long overdue. I, I like how it's narrow, like when you think about old streets in Denver and Boulder, when we come up, when we're on Taylor Street driving past one another, you have to slow down and pull over, it's almost like automatic. Well, it's, that's the way it's gotta be, you gotta pull over and pass slowly. If we widen the street so that two people can pass freely, then that speeds are gonna go up, we gotta keep speeds down. There's a lot of hidden driveways, there's a lot of kids, and I kind of like the narrow street feel there, so. Like I said, going back, I think we have a lot of public comment from, Backland Sparhawk brought the first version of Minterne North, trying to realign this whole thing, that was met with opposition. So hopefully, we can just get some new surface in the existing footprint, and maybe another dip, or make, make the dips a little more sustainable, a little more snowplow-friendly, whatever it takes. But dips are preferred over speed bumps from discussions I've had, because it's a twelve-month traffic calming thing, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Oh, come on.
Okay.
Nathan McCross, seven, three twenty-two Taylor Street. I'd just like to say my thoughts, I agree with Rob, I think we should keep the original footprint of Taylor Street the way it currently is. And not, if any more pavement were to be added, I think it should go towards the current field, towards the new development, but I don't think there's a need for curbs up there, that would just make snow removal harder for everyone there. And those are my thoughts.
I'm sorry, can we get a little more informal here? Can I ask, how's the drainage in your section of the road?
The drainage? It tends to slope down, you know, it follows the slope, so it, from my house at three twenty-two, it tends to slope to the north before it drains into the field, so. I don't know if your intent is to add some drainage over there, or if you're working with a developer, but as of now, it's flowing into their property.
Okay, well, they have a ditch that they've prepared for drainage, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Liz McCain, five sixty-four Taylor, and I, sorry, not getting the microphone. I am in agreement with what's being said right now. Obviously, we're seeing a lot of change up there now, and, and, you know, it's gonna be years until we really see how the new traffic flows and everything shakes out with all these homes being built, so I think at this point in time, a nice new paved job is great, keeping the footprint. Didn't even think about adding a dip, but I think that would be great. And up by Rob and I's section, kind of at the top by the trailhead there, definitely some drainage looking would be good as well. It gets pretty slick for all those milers and ski boots especially, coming down there. So yeah, I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Anthony Martinez, two thirty-two Taylor Street. I'm in agreement with all my neighbors, I like the footprint to stay the same. I do live right on the corner of Lion's Lane and Taylor. There's quite a bit of runoff comes off right in front of the drive. I'd like to see some kind of pan implemented right in there. There's actually kind of a hump right in front of the townhomes, and it kind of dips right down in the front. I'm always worried about the people that are, I'm always watching the people there. Now that there's construction there, I see all my neighbors coming through with their dogs and their kids, and I'm always leery about somebody getting hit. People are saying, oh, you know, we like, we like to drive slow, we like to drive slow, but most of the people that are driving through there are driving fast in front of my house, you know, twenty-five, thirty miles an hour, it's fifteen mile an hour zone. Almost kind of think maybe, maybe a pan in there where the drainage could drain, because that's where the water drains anyway. Would slow the people down and hold the water. Maybe even lift the elevation a little bit on it, to try to get that. As you're coming in, and you're, you're high, you're up high, and you're driving, you're not really seeing down low. So if the little girl's on the wrong side of the road, and she's not paying attention, or the guy's coming to you, I'm always afraid somebody's gonna get hit. I've seen a couple of incidents that was close calls. And just tell everybody to kind of slow down, I know, I know everybody's in a hurry, and everybody's trying to get their stuff done, but there's a stretch between my house and kind of like the new development, it's kind of like nothing there, you know? And people tend to kind of step out a little bit right through there, and I see cars, I mean, thirty miles an hour, constantly, but in front of my house, and it's my neighbors. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Hoblitzel, two six two Taylor. I'm Anthony's next-door neighbor, and I just want to follow on what everybody's saying. I think milling and paving to kind of the existing road edge that's there right now is, is really the most useful thing. Those dips are huge out there, there's one just to the north of us, towards Nathan's house. But as he mentioned, as soon as folks get past that one, when they're traveling south towards Lion Lane, they tend to pick up a lot of speed. By the time they're going by your house, they can be one pretty fast. As far as drainage, I think a lot of that road does tend to slope to the east and sort of pool up by people's driveways, especially when there's snow and slush, and it starts to freeze up in the winter, so it's, you know, part of the milling process, there may be some bigger grading that could be beneficial to slope it into the open space and into the, the snow storage area that's contemplated with Minterne North. So I think that could be real helpful. As far as, you know, sidewalks on that section, I kind of agree with everybody, I, you know, without having just made the decision to go with that actual, you know, full urban street styles in Minterne North, it makes little sense to oppose that, you know, on Taylor Street, but not other parts of the neighborhood at this point in time. I also think the parking question, or the parking concerns on Taylor are greatly overrated, you know, I think there's the parallel parking there that maybe code enforcement was looking at in front of people's houses this summer, which I know is such a source of joy to you, Michelle. In general, it is kind of an overstated issue, I took a tape out there in front of our house and Anthony's house when there are people on the road. There's twenty feet of passable right of way, nineteen to twenty feet, which is in fact more passable right of way than is on Pine Street when you have two cars parallel parked on both sides of the road, and more passable right of way than is on Boulder Street, on the, the two-way section of Boulder Street, so. Don't want to be making much. So um, don't want to be making much to do about nothing, but a lot of those residents do depend on that parallel parking and it's out there for guests. And I don't really think we need to be like, uh, sort of the, the pointless self-imposed dregs of Eagle Vale and Vale where you can't park on the street and your guests get tickets when they're over and you get hassle on the weekends if you have relatives in town. That's not the scene we're interested in for Taylor Street, I believe. I want to speak for everybody. But um, uh, so yeah, really at this time, I think, you know, milling, some minor regrading, addition of traffic calming measures, dips primarily and that sort of thing at the existing road edge on both the east and west side is probably great. Uh, I think if the town dedication parcel somewhere in the future, you know, there might be room to consider. You know, hopefully we're getting sidewalks in the long term. I know how hard Michelle and staff has worked on it through the S-turns and, and the saloon area and trying to deal with that portion, and that's a whole other question. But, you know, beginning those at some point up there along that town dedication parcel, whether it's a park in the future or whatever, it might be something to think about. And uh, you know, with that in mind in the long term, if we are gonna have to do some grading on Taylor to help slope and drainage, um, taking it to the west, I, you know, that's gonna be a great place to stage some of that material if we're thinking about that long-term, about a little bit of road widening on that, that section. So, that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Michael Gutino, one ten Taylor Street. Uh, I support a lot of what Bill just said on the parallel parking at the, I live at the townhomes, uh, so represent a lot of feedback from them. And we, we too have experienced uh some parking on the side of the road what we felt was a little bit of overzealous um code enforcement. So I support that. Thank you for putting up the photos for me. What we're looking at, and actually, can I, I don't know how to direct you, so I apologize for the clunkiness. Could we go back or forward? I want to start, if I could, please. I'll, I'll start here. Well, I, go back to that one, please. Thank you. I'll start here. This, this uh kind of tags on to an earlier comment with, uh, you know, the corner there. And you can see that hill right there. It is, it is steep and, you know, people come over that. Sometimes they're fast, sometimes very rarely are they slow. And then the townhomes comes out of that area. And in the winter, although we do a, we, we pay extra so that we can have that area not slick, it just gets, it's a sheet of ice. And I have, my neighbors have, we've come out of that, you hit the road, it's ice because it's so steep. If there's a car coming there and it's blind, near misses happen, I would say probably a handful of times a month when, when we get a snow season. I don't know what they can do, if anything, on that grade, on that hill, but I think it deserves uh consideration and thought. Uh, if we could go to the next photo. Uh, this is looking back, this is actually in front of one ten Taylor, which is right behind the saloon. It's where the townhomes begin. The unique thing we have are the townhomes, and I think it's a question uh that we were more than willing to work with, is our driveways are part of the road. And when we plow, we basically have to plow part of the road to get the snow removed. Right now, as you can see, there is a, the drainage comes from the left of the photo to the center of the road. And then our driveways from the right come to the center of the road. In theory, that may look good. It doesn't work very well. Uh, we just had our asphalt seal-coated. We had some driveways because the water actually drains from the road into the driveways and pools into our driveways, anywhere from six inches. And one unit actually goes up to about eight, ten inches of water. Uh, it, it goes away quick, but it does happen. So I think it come to the, uh, the point I'm trying to make is there needs to be some consideration of where that grade starts and how do we work with you all? Because we're talking about a lot of our driveways across that front part of Taylor Street. Uh, next photo, please. I'll, I'll stop here because one of the things that I wanted to ask is, is it my understanding that there is a sidewalk where the cars are parked currently planned? Is there a potential?
Yes, that's correct. So to respond to, I think it was Bill that brought up the uh safety, pedestrian safety improvements through Railroad Avenue and the S-curves. I have been working on that with Jeff behind the scenes. We have, you know, I think hopefully most of you know, we have a grant to implement a five-foot wide sidewalk from uh the intersection at the saloon on the Minter Mountain Motel side of the street, all the way through to the end of this picture where that silver vehicle is, which would connect to where the Eco Trail will eventually end.
Fantastic.
And I'm sorry that I've been delayed with the Public Utilities Commission application. Uh, it has been submitted and now I'm waiting for their approval to be able to put a sidewalk over a rail line that's not in use. And so we will, yeah, the hypocrisy. So we will either be looking at later this fall, but more than likely it will be construction spring of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, question. We will, there will be no parking. Once that sidewalk hits, there, all that parking's gone.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Because the sidewalk, the sidewalk will have a curb and it will be basically at the edge of the existing house.
You answered my second question, curb. Thank you. Uh, we can go to the next photo. Uh, this just highlights uh commentary I've already made. Uh, you can see we did the asphalt seal coating. We, we pulled back several thousand dollars of asphalt work because we didn't want to do the asphalt work. We didn't know where to start, how far to go into the road with you, with the town potentially gonna do asphalt. So we held back. There are a couple of driveways that we just had to. The drainage just drains into their driveways and I'll show you that on the next photo. Uh, well, this is, this is the infamous curve that I, you know, deserves a lot of commentary, but I'll keep it short. You can see that the hill, it starts going up, uh, again, referenced several times. Uh, if I may, there is a drainage here for the Mintern Townhomes. The entire property of the Mintern Townhomes drains into a twelve-inch drain. I'll leave that to state or a twelve-inch drain to speak for itself. So what happens at that twelve-inch drain is the water comes through here. You can see where we made some more seal coat. Uh, the town has fixed some things, uh, fixed uh pavement here. What happens is, as diligent as we are in cleaning that twelve-inch drain out, which, you know, gosh, if we could make that bigger and work with the town, the townhomes is willing to look at sharing some of those costs. Because no matter what we do with this grade, that twelve-inch drain overflows. And we do a really good job of, of trying to keep it clean. Sometimes it just gets away with us. Uh, if the town is okay with water still coming over there, it pools, it wears out the road. But I do want to make a note of that twelve-inch drain right there. And it literally drains the entire upper part of the townhomes. You know, who designed it? I, I'm not saying it's a great design, but that's what we have right now. So I wanted to point that out. And then I have one more picture and I'll be done. Thank you. Uh, we can go up one more, please. Maybe they're in the back or... Uh, right there, please. Back one. I apologize for the clunkiness. Uh, this is just an example. You can't really tell here, but this is the hill. This is one of our last buildings. Uh, this is actually on the other side of that drain. Here is a rise that we put in. I would say it's, I'm gonna guess two feet. Uh, because the, what would happen is the, the, the water would drain here and then drain into these two driveways. So we, we went ahead and asphalt this driveway here and created a grade. I think if anyone walks it, Jeff, if you walked it, you'd see we made a lot of effort to not come too far out into the road, but to protect this driveway. And so this is, you know, as I close, this is an example of where we'd like to work with the town on how we incorporate the grades and how it fits with our driveways that run across that whole street on Taylor Street. I really appreciate all of the uh effort in getting way ahead of this. I support it a lot, actually, uh, as far as the, 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 the street is long overdue for paving. And I'll just end with what I've said several times. Really like to work with you all because of that road is, in essence, Taylor Street or Mintern Townhomes driveways. And whatever we can do to uh work together on that and uh create a really good situation there, especially since there's gonna be a sidewalk with curb and where that water might go. Appreciate you letting me walk through the late-minute slideshow. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Hello, um, Jocelyn LaFerrier, five six nine Taylor Street. If you could pull up that map one more time, we're like right at the base of Game Creek Trailhead. So we're kind of like, you have to take a right turn to get up to our house and our driveway. We're not sure if that's part of the proposed paving, if it's gonna go kind of up past, if that's technically Taylor Street or not. But it's kind of right where all of the milers come out and all of the trailhead traffic comes out.
Right, Jocelyn, can you, yeah, for sure, where you at and we can, we can determine.
We are five six nine right here.
Okay, so.
So this kind of little piece.
Yep, that is a private easement.
Okay.
Uh, that is privately owned. Are you renting?
We're renting.
So I think that the folks that you rent from are the ones that own the easement. If they're interested in partnering with, you know, with us to pave further up the hill, we can certainly have those discussions.
Okay.
It'd be less expensive to do it partnering while, all at once.
If you could, if I could give you my email so you could send me, I could contact you with them because I'm pretty sure both of our neighbors and our landlords would definitely be into that. Me not speaking for them. Say it one more time.
Not anymore. Florida rock.
Oh, but also, if possible, I don't know if drainage could also be added to that kind of area because just with everybody coming down the mile, like us getting up to our driveway, it's just a sheet of ice where like you need to prepare yourself and like rev your engine to even get in the driveway, which is not the safest thing when there's hikers and skiers and all kinds of people coming off the trail. And then also total kind of segue, but parking for the trailhead. Is that going to be paved separate? We just have a lot of people that come up and literally park kind of right in our yard and literally picnic in our yard. Um, so if we could put like signage up that like this is not what we're supposed to do?
Right, you're welcome to put signage up in a private yard saying this is private property. Uh, in, in fact, the property owners asked me to put signage up and I said that it's your property. You're welcome to put signage up that says private property. Please do not picnic here or do anything else that may logically does not make sense. And then we can look at more opportunities for signage at the actual trailhead parking.
Okay, cool. That would be super helpful.
Yep, and then I'm manager at Mintern.org if you want to shoot and we can start discussions.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you so much. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something about, I have problems standing up there, so.
You handling the microphone.
He's your road, he's your road neighbor.
My name's Steve Openya. I live at five three six Taylor Street. And I guess uh what I'm concerned about is when I was on the council years and years ago, I mean, Lions Ed was still a cub, but I thought they were gonna straighten that road out. Because I applied in Eagle County for the, when they gave us that extra property out in front. And they told us that that road would be straight. So according to what they told me, that, that they had already done it. I went and applied for it. They told me you don't have to. It's already been, it's yours, you know? I did one roll. I see my property bins at my house now. And it's right where the power lines go through. It's right there. So I, I don't know where his go through, but I'm sure it's pretty close. Okay, that's all I need to know. I need to know one other thing. Can I push my snow to that fence this winter? Or does somebody want to go to the house and help me?
He has to use uh, you've got ATV right with the front end.
I got, yeah, it's an ATV. But that guy that's doing, doing the construction told me they're gonna put a ditch all the way down, so.
Right, and that's.
That would help me out.
I had a chat with, with Pete Tito when I was not, when I was hiking trail. He's concerned that he, he, he's, he's used to using the ATV to plow the snow across the street. And he's concerned that if he can't do that, then he's not gonna be able to do it himself because he can't shovel anymore, those kinds of things, or snow blow.
Guy usually plow it out there and then the town, you know, just moves it down the street or whatever. Works, it works. If not, you wanna mind?
Is the ditch that, that far off?
So if the council, so this is of course a different topic, but if the council wants to consider changing the code to allow for people to push snow off of their private property, the council has the ability to do that.
So um, so yeah, so the drainage is gonna be, they're creating a ditch, right? So in the wintertime, that's where, where the snow, the town's gonna put the snow. So um, we can follow up with that when we get more into the design, but uh we'll make sure that, that we sit down with you and go through it because it helps if they're on site to look at what you're doing.
Yeah, I would suggest that Arnold and the team go be proactive and kind of go check out the area and knowing where things usually go, just kind of figure out what, what this winter might look like ahead of time instead of us having to go back and address this afterwards. And then maybe if there's recommendations that we need to change something or change whatever, um, just let us know. I don't know exactly that spot.
Arnold, they, they, they do it, all they've been doing, I've lived there for forty-seven years and they do it. But if I can't do it or whatever, you know, I gotta prepare myself too, you know? That's why I want my neighbor to be like.
I think, I think probably kind of except the council, but we're kind of just at the beginning of the process. So I think uh whatever, Michelle's missed process, the cleanup process. So, so it's just matter, do we do a staff or have Arnold go out, Dr. Tito or whatever? You know, just to, just to see the lay of the land is basically what I want to make sure of.
I can do.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Kristen Thomas, two six two Taylor. Just reiterating what everyone has said, I think it should maintain the current alignment. I don't think we need sidewalks. I am really glad you brought up that hill because I wouldn't have thought of it, Anthony, but I've, if there's any way to make it a little less steep or figure out drainage on it, I've had cartoon moments falling when I've been walking, so that would be nice. And I have a question for you, Michelle. If we wanted to pave our driveway, could we work with you to do it at the same time?
Yes. Any, anyone interested in doing that, we would want to get them with Jeff so that we can coordinate in advance.
And just email you?
Feel free to email me and I'll get a list going so that once a contractor, well, Jeff will help me figure out the process.
Yeah.
Uh, but yes, anyone can feel free to do that. Great. Thank you.
Hello, Andrea, um, three eight two Taylor. Um, I had at some points, most of them are redundant because I do agree with everyone. Um, dips are better than bumps, um, especially the bumps that we have around Taylor don't seem to last. So dips are good. And um, one thing that hasn't been mentioned is the fifty-two parking spots by the trailhead right now. I think that's entirely unnecessary. I don't know why we have fifty-two parking spots. It used to be that Mintern milers would just ski down the street. Now they're just gonna park, which is just gonna increase traffic on our street, especially when we have that many parking spots. especially when we have that many parking spots available. I believe Katie and Darren sent you guys a pretty long and thorough document about why we should not have that much parking and I would second that. I agree, keep footprint the same as it is. One thing, I don't know if this is exactly on point, but at the beginning of winter, each winter, law enforcement starts enforcing the no parking on the parallel parking. I'm not really sure if we have a date that that is actually, you're not supposed to park there. I've never seen a date mentioned or posted anywhere and it seems kind of like arbitrary enforcement because, I mean, this year, this past winter, we had a later snow season and they started enforcing the no parking when it hadn't snowed yet. So I don't know if there's any way for the town to just come up if we don't have certain no parking dates and then have that either posted or at least temporary signs put up that say no parking between November and April or whatnot, just so everyone's aware of when there is no parking so we don't have unnecessary tickets when people aren't trying to park there when they shouldn't be. We just don't know when it's gonna be enforced or not. Think that's, yeah, generally agree with everyone. So, yes, thank you.
Oh, please don't go.
Yes.
So if I could ask you a couple of questions. One, I, I think that we can address that no parking issue. Usually it starts November first, but I just made a note that, you know, maybe we can just bag, we put these like canvassy bags over top of the signs when they're not necessarily needed and I wonder if we can just bag the signs until like the week before our first plan storm at least to, to help with that. And then the fifty-two spots by the trailhead, so there, there was quite a bit of discussion during the Minter North hearings about the need for more parking at the trailheads. You, you know, we're just looking to do what everyone wants us to do.
Was that, I was there for that. I didn't know that was the consensus was like.
And I don't know.
That, I was, I never got, I don't, I don't remember exactly. I don't, I never got that we wanted, I don't know, that much parking. It's a lot of parking right now.
Like, what, what would you, like, what do you think? Like, because I don't, I'm just not up there every day to see the amount of trailhead parking getting used. And so I wonder, you know, if we're looking at Game Creek usage, knowing it's probably getting more popular, just like Grouse and others, is, are twenty spots in that.
That's what I was gonna say, half. I don't know if anyone else has half.
Max twenty.
Max twenty.
I've seen two cars there.
Yeah.
I, I, I'll add, I've talked to Rick in length about this and he, he, his perception and why he put that many in is he really felt that he was, his words, doing a favor and creating a longer term solution for what they felt was going to only increase in popularity. And so that's just feedback. That doesn't mean one thing or another, but I, I, I have spoken to Rick and he felt that going that much was actually response to what he felt the feedback was, that there was a lot of, uh, problems with parking up there.
And I'm sure the feedback's gonna be different for people on Taylor Street as opposed to people generally in the community might want more parking, whereas Taylor Street generally seems maybe we want a little less parking, um, just 'cause.
Yeah. Okay.
My only concern with less is if people then come and park in our, like where we would normally or if we have guests and.
That's, that's exactly what Rick was trying to avoid.
I completely get the not wanting a bazillion cars, but if that would then impact our parking.
If it's possible to put a sign in the designated parking spots, whatever number it is, saying there's additional parking in the miss pool lot, directing other people down there, which is right across from the saloon, which is probably where they're going in. Yeah, that's it. Yeah, that is a good idea.
We can definitely look at those options. So I've, I've written down just as a general consensus for this room, approximately twenty.
What about hours for parking at the trailhead? 'Cause that impacts snow removal on that corner there at the top of a steep hill and it's a nightmare on a, during the snow cycle with traffic, parking, making their own parking spots.
Right, and I know that Arnold, and, and when I say Arnold, Arnold is Public Works, put a sign up last year indicating no parking at, at that trailhead parking area. I wanna say at eight AM because that's when they would come through to remove the snow, not only from the road, but the trailhead itself, uh, and not the trail, the trailhead parking itself. So we can make a note to make sure to address not only, uh, the number of spaces, but the times where no parking is allowed to ensure snow removal.
At eight AM, that's gonna mess up my skin.
Uh, if it's okay, I would like to be a trailhead, weigh in on the trailhead stuff 'cause I got front row seats on it. And Rick is planning to eliminate these flat spots at the top, which in the winter, those are the only spots people can actually park and get out without getting towed out by Matt Tisler or myself. All these spots, which are gonna be the future trailhead spots, are way steeper and hopefully we can convince people to park parallel style or we're gonna make a lot of extra cash with our tow straps. I think that, uh, the amount of parking is appropriate if people will actually park parallel and not getting themselves stuck in the wintertime. It's, uh, they are, there's fifty-two spots, yeah, but they're eliminating the good ones. And the, the actual good spots in the future are gonna be in front of Duncan's house and Darren's house and, uh, down there in the flats right before Fourth Street. We're gonna, we're gonna see some slipping and sliding this year with the new alignment. Also, uh, as for the fence, as Tito was saying, uh, I would, I'll consent an email, but hopefully that temporary chain link fence will come down before November so that the snow can actually be pushed into the ditch that they've made. But yeah, it's fifty-two spots. If, if you park perpendicular to the street, that's not feasible in the winter. People are gonna find that out pretty quick.
Hi again. Didn't realize we were going into trailhead tonight. So, um, I think, um, it's definitely something we just wanna monitor ongoing as this development happens. So, um, I wasn't, you know, my, my understanding was that the developer was gonna kind of take over making these spots and everything, which again, for anyone who's been up there, I don't think things look as they're going to look. We got a huge chain link fence there right now. Uh, we used to have a spot where the snow could be pushed, that, you know, the trailhead parking stopped, that's gone. So things are definitely different. I just would make everyone aware that it, it is gonna need to be monitored. I really, Brian, I thought that was a great, you know, let's just get on top of this in October before the snow comes, how we're gonna handle that, um, this winter. So, uh, amount of spots, yes, it's becoming more popular. I, I'm not against maybe some more parking, but as Rob mentioned, um, I didn't know those flat spots were gonna take it away. But, um, yeah, we definitely wanna monitor, uh, yeah, how people park and just constant towing happens up there all winter anyways. So, um, I just, uh, I think we just need to monitor it and continue this discussion. I didn't think that was with the paving, so I didn't bring it up, but, um, it's gonna become something we wanna watch, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're all here, let's talk about it.
I've, I've got another one. My neighbors will probably see, see their time if they need it. But, um, if, if we're going beyond just milling and paving and we're gonna be doing grading and thinking about sidewalks and actually have equipment out there, then I think this is a prime time to just take care of the lines lane issue once and for all. We just came into possession of this dedication parcel and I think a lot of people are excited for what might be used there. You know, I, some folks in town are contemplating staff housing. I think people in Taylor Street are thinking more park, open space, sidewalk, something like that. But either way, why don't we open the plat, cut ten feet off of the sharp little southern corner of that where it's not much of a usable parcel anyway? Add that to the current road alignment and road easement and just give ten feet to Lions Lane and give them a full driveway and eliminate the issue that happens at those condos once and for all. Just bring the whole street slightly north. I'm having, I would support the town doing that for the price of one dollar. I know that it's a thing to take some public land and give it to a private party, but that's not a super usable part of that parcel. This is a continuing problem with people having to stick all the way out to the road. Michael's just talked about the, the snow issue. We have an opportunity here, just open the plat, shave off ten feet of it, move the road over and bam, we're not gonna be dealing with this for the next thirty or fifty years of town. Does that, do you guys understand what I'm talking about there?
Yeah.
I like, I like to see that turning and kind of square up so when you turn, you can see cars coming.
And whatever happens on this parcel, this is the real usable part of it. Lions Lane needs this for snow storage. We talked about that a lot in this council, but, uh, you know, moving the road alignment over here and just getting it away from their homes and their driveways, I think is win-win-win for everybody and hopefully nobody's feeling the loss of that ten feet of now town, town-owned land. So to do that, why we're, you know, if we're just milling the street, that's a lot of work. But if we're gonna be grading and doing dirt work and bringing in road base out there, then like, let's just take care of it while we can.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else?
So, my name's Jerry Lopez, two, fifty-two, North Taylor. Bill's my neighbor, Anthony's my neighbor, and that little dip that they're talking about is an issue. And I think when we do go after this, it's more than just milling and grinding. We, we need to, um, regrade the whole road. Have the road have two percent going to the west side so the water's going away from homes and houses. I don't think we need to get wider with the road. I have three little girls that play on that road and, um, with all the traffic due to the low road being closed, people are just hauling ass through there and I, I don't like my daughters playing on that road. I do oppose the, um, concrete path down there by the railroad tracks.
The eco-trail?
Yes.
Or, or the sidewalks that get put in, in the S curve?
Like when you cross the railroad tracks, it's gonna be on the what, the north side?
Yes, we're looking at a five-foot wide sidewalk, uh, along the north side of the road.
Yeah, so I oppose that, um, because all it's gonna create is the townhomes from parking where they already do park and it's gonna push them to where my driveway is and, um, which is gonna make the road even more narrow. But yeah, I like everybody else. I like the dips. I think that's a good idea. But yeah, I mean, if we're gonna fix this road, let's do it right now. Just do it, just to do it and then have to deal with it another ten years. And I think since, since these developers are here, we should take advantage of, of them and have them pay for some of this stuff as well and not just let them do what they want. Like sometimes this, this town does, they kind of let, um, some people kind of get away with things if they have more money. But not say it's not you. I've, I've been here long enough to see councils come and go. But that's kind of my two cents.
Duncan, five, three, one, Taylor Street. To start off, thanks for the sign that, you know, informed everyone the, the meeting was tonight. I think it's super helpful to just get everyone informed and then you get a lot of opinions and, and you can make a good decision. I think the, the water issue is a big deal on my set of, side of the street. Everything is kind of graded towards the existing homes and if we could make it grade the other way, it, pull that water away from the driveways and, you know, off the road in the correct direction. There is one, uh, issue with the, when they, when they did the milling and, and put those millings to create that, um, temporary parking area that's gonna be permanent and paved, is that right? That's gonna be part of this project is paving the fifty-two spots on the, the west side.
Well, that remains to be seen.
Okay.
For, for one, I think the number of spots remains to be seen depending on what folks want. And then two, taking a look at what that would look like as part of the project with needed drainage. But it's been noted for consideration to throw out there for the next round of discussions.
Okay. Yeah, um, there is a, you know, right on the corner of my driveway, so right by five, three, one and five, three, two, there's a, uh, a drain right there and then five, three, two, there's a pipe that goes up their driveway that collects a stream that comes off the hillside in springtime and it, it has quite a bit of water in the spring. And when they redid that piece across the road with the millions right now, they, they cut out, um, the drain. So there's a piece, there's a drain, I, I bet it's like a ten or twelve inch pipe that goes under the road there and then used to daylight and that's, uh, just blocked off right now. So I think it's something to consider with, you know, like you're gonna have to dig that up. Right now there's standing water in the, in the drain. It's probably slowly seeping into the ground, but definitely something that maybe got, you know, overlooked or forgotten. I think the, uh, the parking issue, the fifty-two spots, um, yeah, I don't think I ever saw it full this summer. But I, I do like the parking in front of my house, so if other people don't want it in front of theirs, put it in front of mine 'cause I think it's, it's useful. The, the hours, I think, you know, just like in most areas, you can have, you know, like you can't park between two AM and six AM or something. I think the eight AM is, you know, for Arnold is helpful, but that's tough for people that park and ski the mile. You can't eliminate parking at eight 'cause that's, you know, people start parking there at, you know, six-thirty and then they, you know, stay there all day.
You say six, six-thirty?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's appropriate. Um, and I think a lot of my, my neighbors use that, that parking area temporarily and if there was a, a time limit on it, I don't think that'd be a big deal. I think the existing right-of-way or the existing asphalt should remain, you know, straightening out the road would, it would, you know, right by my house, it makes a little, little curb. So to straighten it out, probably wouldn't affect anybody along the road except for take away a big chunk of, you know, the, the right-of-way, but it's, you know, essentially my driveway. And then I think the width of the road is appropriate. I think it, like Rob was saying, it makes people slow down. And, uh, and, you know, there's tons of kids that play in the street. I know it's, you know, sounds like a bad idea, but it's, it, it, it works. One other issue is I think, you know, Darren mentioned to me, my neighbor, that he would like to see, you know, some of that parking broken up, the fifty-two spots broken up with some green space. So maybe some chunks of asphalt with some grass or whatever in between. It can be just native grass and it could act as, you know, overflow parking or people could, people could park on it. There's tons of cars and then, you know, it can, um, you know, grow again. Uh, I think that's, that's about it. Thanks for taking all the comments and being here.
Thank you, Duncan.
Yep.
Anyone else? Are you exhausted?
Are they gonna open for straight up or not?
Yes, uh, last I heard is it's supposed, it is supposed to open up at the end of October.
Oh, thank you.
I, I wanna thank you all for coming in. You've given us very valuable information and so, uh, we're gonna get to work on it. Jeff, Jeff's gonna get his guys out there, I'm sure, at some point and.
If I might add, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
So, uh, anybody whose email I might not have, or if you just wanna ensure that I have it, I, um, greatly appreciate the ability to directly communicate. I anticipate getting Jeff out on site. Uh, and the best thing that we can do is then have these additional conversations on site so we can see where the, you know, drain pan is clogged and, and all these other things that are clearly occurring that we want to implement. Being able to walk some of this with all of you on site is incredibly valuable for us who do not spend every day there to understand how we can improve those, those issues. So my email again is manager@mintern.org. I oftentimes send emails to Taylor Street residents whose emails I have and I ask those residents to then forward to anyone that they might think is interested. I of course would love to directly email any communications, uh, as much as I can. So if you think for any reason you're not getting my emails, uh, I might not have your email address, I'm happy to add you to the list. Uh, as we go through this process, there will be further discussions, you know, I expect iterations of the plan so that we can all find what balance works for everybody. So thank you again, um, and I, I think the sign worked.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As a takeaway too, like this has been super cool. I think one thing that we learned last go-around was we should count the number of parking spaces out there and kind of have that as an inventory, whether official spaces or not, because it seems like everyone's kind of saying, "Michael, let's keep the same amount." So I know when we set the, the bullbobs out, we, we didn't really maybe communicate super clearly that what the impact would be on parking, so I just want to make sure that we are quantifying that. And then I'll bring up again the idea, like long-term, we could move the Trailhead parking off of Taylor. Like I've seen a lot of different examples of it. You could exit the trail, or there's a trail near my parents' house in Arizona that the parking is in a church down the way. Everyone just walks the sidewalk up to the trail. So if that's like a huge annoyance of you guys, if it was me living over there, I'd probably be for it. I will throw that out there again.
Take over Rick's CUP once he's done with it.
Idea that was suggested today, dividing up the parking, I guess you suggested with grass, and I'm wondering if, and people would just park in grass and trees, and it might, and make things look nicer for you guys too.
I wouldn't bring up trees right now. Horrible things are happening to trees on Taylor Street.
Well, I see a lot of people who are, she gets parked down the return cable anyway.
I think Lynn breaking it up with those, just native grasses, I'm sorry, talk over him, is good for stormwater drainage and infiltration and that sort of thing in there, and then doesn't interfere with a plow pushing a pile. And then if that parking is, someone can park over that grass temporarily in the summer if there was an event, or the folks on the north end of the street had company over, and it would not permanently impair native grass and damage it and that sort of thing.
Anyone else have, last chance to speak?
Is the developer kicking down any funding for the maintenance repair of this Taylor Street project?
Do you want me to answer that?
The town is, okay.
I feel like they should be on the hook for a percentage of it because of all the, the added volume and pressure on Taylor Street.
They have a construction use tax, you know, that, so 4% of his materials cost goes to the town, and that's the money that'll be used. There'll be a little bit of a time offset for it, because we want to get Taylor done next, this next summer. And, and so, and all of the construction use tax, tax money won't be in our butt, in our coffers at that time, but we'll bridge that.
I can also provide additional context that the developer is being required to pave Mintern Road and County Road 14 all the way to Highway 24. So...
When that's going to happen?
2025, yeah. So they were not required to pave Taylor since none of their driveways access Taylor, but they are required to pave all of Mintern and County Road.
Is there a plan to regrade the County Road and Mintern Road before it gets paved? Because it's almost impassable right now.
I hear you. So the goal, behind the scenes, we've been working to get the Mintern Road portion that was the pavement, or what was left of pavement, that was taken out. The goal has been to get that repaved this fall. And the developer has been pushing really hard to get it repaved this fall. They've been waiting on Excel Energy to submit a utility plan to Union Pacific, whereby Union Pacific then has to approve the utility plan before the paving can take, right. So you see the conundrum, but everybody has been pushing, the town and the developer have been pushing very hard behind the scenes. And Excel Energy even seems to be relatively interested in moving at faster than their usual pace. The goal is to get it paved this fall. We're waiting on the railroad right now. Oh, and Jay brought up the photo of the tragic tree.
That's a disaster. Should be ashamed of it.
We're aware. So an arborist came through that works for, that was contracted through Excel Energy, and if any of you drive down the 100 and 200 block of Eagle Street behind, like Sunrise Cafe, you will see a whole line of trees that look just like this as well. It's, it's really unfortunate, like...
Same old Meadow Lane too.
Yeah.
So they call Chris.
They're doing it statewide.
Right, and I will, and I, I know I'm not allowed to plug anybody, but we did hire Chris's company for Eagle Street a couple of years ago, and that was a really great job. Yeah, this is, and so we apologize, we have no control over that. Thanks for bringing that up. Oh, and Jay has asked for a moment of silence for the tree.
Can we all have a moment of silence? Thank you.
Lynn, do you foresee the sidewalk going in by the International building?
Right. So we have submitted our Public Utilities Commission application to get approval for the sidewalk. It blew me away a little bit that I needed approval to put a sidewalk over an out-of-use rail line. The application is now waiting for approval from the Public Utilities Commission, at which point we have everything else ready to go to bid. So depending on when we get that approval back from the Public Utilities Commission, it could potentially be this fall. That's a huge long shot at this point. I would expect that we would do that in the spring of 2025. So, you know, not to candy coat anything, huge upheavals to Taylor Street, spring of 2025. Between all of the paving, grants for sidewalks, construction of homes, we apologize.
Hang in there. It'll get better one day.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. All right. So next discussion of future agenda items.
I have one.
Oh, right, I introduced myself to you, I don't know, a couple of months ago, we moved in behind Burke. I don't think that'll be a problem.
Got to wait till I figure...
We're, we're still going, so please. She was saying, future agenda items, she was concerned, the concern that Tom brought up about the pole, the power pole, with the, for the distillery, about traffic backing up and all that. We had discussed that, your, your design guidelines stuff. Lynn's concerned about whether, whether we get to have Jeff look at that in relation to what the building is, at the distillery.
I'm thinking cars turn around right now. These properties, it's all... When that's gone, we need an alternative, like one way, not making anything else in one way.
Okay. We can certainly add that as a future discussion item. Also, as a future discussion item, I would like to add an update to the Phase 2 sidewalk project, which we are looking at construction also in 2025. And the project has been greatly modified from where it originally began.
Yeah, if I could put in for the Design Guidelines, 100 Block Design Guidelines review along with consideration of other options for historic buildings?
I, I can say, Mr. Mayor, that the council gave approval, thank you, Jeff. The council gave approval at the last council meeting for the Historic Preservation Commission to start reviewing additional options for consideration for flexibility. They had their first conversation about that at last night's Historic Preservation Commission meeting, and I expect that conversation to continue to their October meeting, and then things might start trickling toward the council. And I can certainly add, you said, downtown design guidelines?
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of things that I, I think we just need to look at. 25-lit setbacks is one, since we're not having as much residential on that side. But anyway, I, I just think that we need to revisit a couple of things.
Are those specifically for historic preservation or in general?
No, that's just in general.
Thank you.
I would add on the historical preservation thing, as long as they're expanding there. I had written in my comments the first time that 151 and 155 came around, that given, if, if we're like serious about historical preservation and a culture around that and the appreciation of a town, we should look at other things that the HPC could be doing in order to further that. Other towns, it doesn't take much to go find other towns that are doing some cool stuff. Like, I actually sent you an email earlier to, with a list of things that maybe they could talk about and see if they'd be interested in, but you could do things like, obviously signage around town or adjacent land, like the Forest Service cabins and things, the integration of history into town events, like the, you know, make them unique to Mintern. So like Fruta has the Headless Chicken Festival, or what is it? The Frozen Dead Guy Days in...
Netherlands.
Estes Park or Ned, yeah. Those are just some funny ones that I thought of off the bat. You know, that incorporate the town's history into events and build a culture around it. You could create speaker events, you know, you could create podcasts, articles, other media that we could kind of preserve and highlight the history, or other, you know, grant programs to help look at, you know, achieving some of these like look and feel goals, or encouraging, you know, design updates to match historical things or look at funding, and then also like look at funding for grant opportunities or whatever to purchase historical things instead of just designating them. Maybe we'd be in a position to, you know, write a grant and purchase them from, for the purpose of historical preservation. So it seems to me like if we want to really build this kind of culture around Mintern's history and integrate it in our community, there's just like so much more that the HPC could be doing rather than just dominating structures.
I think they are doing more. I, I know that they're doing a great deal of research right now and talking to a lot of people around the state in different communities. But, you know, one project that I always thought would be just awesome, if the town were able to get a grant to buy a historic building, would be to buy the Mattress Building and make that into a community center.
What building? The Mattress Building?
Which is really large, and would make a wonderful...
Yeah, I mean, they could have a list of properties.
For big group meeting, you know, town meetings, or, yeah. It would be a great resource, even music indoors, you know, would be a great resource.
I was talking with Ken Holiday the other day, he said the same thing. He, you know, had a list of things about like what you did, and he's been looking at other areas. He's a chairman on the board, so I know that they're probably looking at a lot of those ideas.
And if they want to do that, like, are they going to come to us with a, an ask of like, can we be working on this? Or how does that even work? I don't know. Does that change the charter? Do we have to do that?
I think they can do, do all that, and if anything, come up with anything they want to take action on, you would have to come back to us.
Yep, they're a recommending body, so it'll come to you. So they can create great ideas. Completely agree, I was in your ray a couple of weekends ago. They have great signage showing what the Main Street profile looked like in 1880, you know, and great things like that. And so they can explore those opportunities and then determine what they might recommend, and then those recommendations come to the council pending if there's costs associated.
Yeah.
And I, I remember, was it, I think it was the library that did a lot of interviews for folks back in the 90s that were still alive and lived there all their lives?
There was a, there was a interview, yes, there was, well, I don't know, I think it was through a grant, that people were verbally interviewed and notes were taken.
Well, there's some good stories we could play from that information, but also, I'm just thinking about historical markers and, and like, like with 151, you could put, but I watch Auntie Croche sometimes, the problems, they always say that, that's the story behind the building.
And I, I will say that Woody has a lot of film footage from interviews with old timers from about 15 years ago. And he's got a lot of those old stories recorded.
And so that can be all part of the histories, because I know Mary Waldo, before she died, she was, she told me the story about, you know, they live over Main River, living in the 1920s, about how mom had major go grab the burrow and go down to the saloon and grab dad, throw him on the saloon on the burrow, and take him back home because he was drinking and playing poker all night. You know, a little thing like that now. We didn't want to talk to Andy before, before we decided to tell that story.
It sounds like we're all behind it, like, so, okay, how do we like get to them, like, this is what we, like, you should be like doing stuff like this. And if you are and you're not telling us, then give us an update and let us know.
That there was an ambient trading post. It was a pretty big deal.
We could cover the Exeterian saloon with stories. Probably not, but, yeah. Okay, so anything else for future agenda items? Okay. Any adjournments?
To adjourn.
I'll second that.
Pushed by Eric, seconded by Gusty, all in favor?
Aye.
Buzz?
What? I've never made it to that.